Reside temporarily until the board chair is elected. Now I ask you to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Next is the adoption of our agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Be opposed? We now have an agenda. Thank you. Next, or my announcements, I just have a couple of announcements this evening. One, just to let you know, a quick update. We have what I call viewable progress at Christiansburg Elementary and Christiansburg Primary. So if you get a chance to drive by, you will see that there is block going up. And seeing progress is very, very exciting for all of us. We expect to see the same soon at Bellevue Elementary. With hopefully next couple of weeks, we'll see things happening at Bellevue. Also wanted to announce that the USDA has extended the free meals for all students through the end of the school year. So we're glad about that, so students will not have to pay for their meals. This also, we'll also continue, just to remind you, we've been allowing our teachers and staff to eat for free all year. And we're paying for that for our teachers and staff. And had a lot of teachers and staff that are very gracious that we're doing that. And said it's really made their lives easier middle of the day not to have to take care of that one thing. So very excited about that. Next is our reorganization of the school board for this year. And the first is election of the board chair. Anyone on the board may nominate another board member for the chair. A nomination does not require a second. Once nominations are complete, I will ask for a motion to close nominations. This motion must be seconded and voted on by the board. We will then vote on each nominee in the order of their nomination. So first, do I have a nomination for chair of the Montgomery County School Board?
Dr. Meyer, I would like to nominate Marty Graham for our board chair.
Okay, thank you. We have a nomination for Mrs. Graham as the board chair. Are there any other nominations? All right, hearing none, may I have a motion to close the nominations?
So moved.
A second? Down here, second. Okay, all right, thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. We will now vote on nominees, we'll now actually vote on the nominees. Our first nominee and only nominee was Marty Graham. Ms. Drake, can we have a roll call?
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Tribaka?
Abstain.
Ms. Franklin?
No.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Cass?
Abstain.
Ms. Karan?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. So the eyes have it, and Ms. Graham is elected chair of the Montgomery County School Board for 2021. Ms. Graham, I now turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you. I would like to, before we move on to the other officers, I would like to recognize Ms. Karan for her five years of service as school board chair. Ms. Karan visited schools, attended almost every academic art, theater, music, sports activity at most all schools. She served as the Governor's School Liaison, participated in dialogue and race, and certainly did a lot of continuing as a school board member. Her passion for equitable education for the students in Montgomery County is unparalleled. And her work to build a cohesive school board was done with grace and compassion. Thank you, Ms. Karan, for all. Now, if any other school board members wanted to say a word, they're welcome to.
Yeah, I'd like to add my thanks to all the work that you've done, Ms. Karan. I think it's, you know, doing this is a thankless job, people always say. And I think being the chair is another level of thanklessness on top of that. But, you know, I think we, 2020, I think, was a year when we definitely saw some, you know, some fault lines on some issues. But regardless, I mean, I do think that a lot of what leadership that you brought, I think we communicate better as a board and with each other. I think we listen to each other a little bit better and come together better because of your leadership. So I thank you for your service for five years.
Thank you so much. I appreciate.
Go ahead, Ms. Parton.
Gunna, you have given tirelessly of your time and your resources for the last five years as our chair. I just want you to know how proud and how humbled I am to have had you as a chair during my first term as a board member. And I want to personally thank you for all of the endless phone calls, all of the information, all of the help that you have provided me over the last three years. I appreciate you more than you know. And I want to also thank you for serving our, all of our students, our faculty and our staff, again with grace and compassion, as Marty stated. And we, I just feel as a board, we've been very fortunate to have you showing your grace. This has been a very challenging year behind us. We probably still have a very challenging year ahead. So thank you for your wisdom and your decision-making and your professionalism. And I truly appreciate your service. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate.
Yes, ma'am.
Gunna and I can't turn around and talk at the same time. Since I'm in my new chair. Hopefully, one day, we're gonna be together again. Exactly, and I'm gonna take my mask off for just a minute while I say thank you. I concur with everybody and what they've said and how much I've enjoyed not only being on the board, as you being a chair, but also some of the VSBAs, some of the NSBAs, we've enjoyed, you know, just having dinners and conversations and learning how to be better board members. I appreciate your time, and it'll be nice just to be a board member with you. Once again, we've done that before. I'm excited about that. Thank you again. Thank you.
Anybody else want to before we move on? Okay.
Well, thank you all so much. It has been honor and pleasure, that's for sure. And I'm looking forward to serve as a board member and see how it is, whether I know how to do it or not. We'll see.
You will be fine. Okay, to continue the reorganization of the school board, we will elect a vice chair. As with the election of the board chair, anyone on the board may nominate another board member. A nomination does not require a second. Once nominations are complete, I will ask for a motion to close nominations. This motion must be seconded and voted on by the board. We will then vote on each nominee in the order of their nomination. Do I have a nomination for the vice chair of the Montgomery County School Board?
Madam Chair, I would like to nominate Ms. Penny Franklin as the vice chair.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Hearing and seeing none, may I have a motion to close nominations?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We will now vote on the nomination of Ms. Franklin for vice chair. Ms. Drake, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Mr. Tribaka?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Cass?
Yes.
Ms. Karan?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the appointment of clerk. Do I have a motion to appoint Brenda Drake as the clerk of the board?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. So Ms. Drake is now appointed the clerk of the Montgomery County School Board for 2021. Next on the agenda is the appointment of deputy clerks for the Montgomery County School Board. Do I have a motion to appoint Becky Shanks and Mark Meyer as deputy clerks of the Montgomery County School Board?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So Becky Shanks and Mark Meyer are appointed deputy clerks of the board for 2021. The next part of our reorganization is the adoption of a resolution affirming officers of the county board, of the county school board of Montgomery County. I need a motion affirming that our officers as, Marty Graham for board chair, Penny Franklin for vice chair, Brenda Drake as clerk, Becky Shanks as deputy clerk, and Mark Meyer as deputy clerk.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The next part of this reorganization is the board committee appointments. Historically, the board chair has made appointments or sought volunteers for other committees and boards. As a reminder, board members will no longer serve on superintendent committees as advised by our attorney. This includes the calendar committee, the insurance committee, and the safety committee. As board members, we vote on the actions of these committees, so it is a conflict of interest for us to serve as committee members. This year, committee appointments include two members for liaison to the board of supervisor, one VSBA voting delegate, one VSBA alternate, one liaison to the Southwest Virginia Governor's School, and up to two liaisons for the educational foundation. If the board is okay with this, I will go ahead and list who was on these committees next year, and you can say yea or nay as to whether you would like to continue that service. and you can say yea or nay as to whether you would like to continue that service. The Board of Supervisors Liaison, of course, will change. That will be Chair and Vice Chair, so Marty Graham and Penny Franklin. The VSBA Voting Delegate is currently Ms. Parton. Do you want to continue with that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. And the VSBA Alternate is Mark Tribaka? You good with continuing?
That'd be great, thanks.
Okay. The Southwest Virginia Governor's School is Goon and Karan. Great. The Montgomery County Educational Foundation is myself and Sue Cass. Sue, would you like to remain on that?
Sure.
Okay, great, thank you. The Town of Christiansburg Liaison is Jamie Bond and Dana Parton. Are you guys still okay with continuing that? And then Town of Blacksburg Liaison is Sue Cass. Are you good with continuing that?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Madam Chair? I'm wondering, I would also, I don't know if it would make Ms. Cass's job easier or harder, but I would also be willing if, you know, if she desires, since we have two two of our members for the Christiansburg, Town of Christiansburg Liaison and two for the Board of Supervisors, I'd be happy to join Ms. Cass to be Town of
Town of Blacksburg.
Town of Blacksburg.
You said Christiansburg.
You meant Town of Blacksburg.
Town of Blacksburg.
Well, I guess I was saying that we have two, we have two members for each of those boards, except for the Town of Blacksburg, so I'd be willing to add myself to that if it's the will of the Board and the will of Sue.
So Sue, you're good with that? I'm sorry, I assumed that from your eyes.
Aye.
Okay, sounds great. So so I guess we don't need to do any vote on oh, we do?
We do vote on those Committee Appointments. So if we can have a motion to approve the Committee Appointments, and I can read those for you. Board of Supervisors Liaison, Marty Graham and Penny Franklin, VSBA Voting Delegate Dana Parton, VSBA Alternate Delegate Mark Tribaka, Southwest Virginia Governor's School Goon and Karan, Montgomery County Educational Foundation Marty Graham and Sue Cass, Town of Christiansburg Liaison Jamie Bond and Dana Parton, Town of Blacksburg Liaison Sue Cass and Mark Tribaka.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Thank you, everyone, for volunteering. All those in favor?
Aye.
Who say aye?
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, now we have the adoption of our resolution appointing Agent and Deputy Agent for Signing Claims. I need a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the Superintendent and, in his absence, the Assistant Superintendent of Operations to serve as Agent and Deputy Agent for Signing Claims.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Do I have a motion to appoint the Deputy Superintendent as the Primary Superintendent Designee and, in their absence, the Assistant Superintendent for Operations as the Secondary Superintendent Designee?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. The next is schedule meeting dates, time and location. Our next item is to set the meeting dates, times and locations for the year. The meeting calendar provided in Board Docs includes our regular first and third meetings and our budget planning meetings. Do I have a motion to approve the 2021 meeting calendar as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The next is the adoption of Hiring Practices Resolution. Do I have a motion to adopt the revised Hiring Practices Resolution? This year's revisions include the focus on diversity in our hiring practices.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The next is the adoption of the Board Procedures Code of Ethics and Standards of Conduct. Annually, the School Board revisits the Board Procedures, Standards of Conduct and Code of Ethics, as noted in Policy 1-1.6. Do I have a motion to reaffirm this policy?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? During Board Norms and Protoc, uh, School Board Norms and Protocols, during the 2020 work of the School Board with the Virginia School Board Association, the Board created a set of norms and protocols. The updated norms and protocols are provided for approval as part of the reorganization process. Do I have a motion to reaffirm those protocols?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The next is the reaffirmation of Statement of Inclusivity. Do I have a motion to reaffirm the School Division's Statement of Inclusivity?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The next is Policy 1-1.5, the Mission Statement, Beliefs and Objectives. Policy 1-1.5 has been updated to reflect the mission statement, beliefs and objectives in our new strategic plan. This is the first reading of the policy and will be, and it will be brought back to you at the next meeting for approval. So we do, we won't need to vote on that right now. The next is the adoption of resolution authorizing the Superintendent to settle claims against the School Board. I need a motion to approve a resolution granting authority to the Division Superintendent to authorize settlement of claims against the School Board.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The, we must also do the announcement regarding the availability of the Policy Manual. The MCPS Policy Manual is available on the MCPS website at www.mcpss.org. Printed copies are available to citizens as needed by contacting the Clerk of the Board. At this time, I will hand it back over to Dr. Meyer for our awards, honors, awards and recognition.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Graham. Tonight, we recognize Shawesville Middle School for receiving the SIM Impact Award. Mr. Polly is here to tell us more about that award.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Drake. Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Dr. Meyer, it's my pleasure this evening to talk with you about the SIM Impact Award that was presented to Shawesville Middle School. The SIM Impact Award is presented by the University of Kansas Center for Research on Learning and the Professional Development Research Institute to schools or school divisions that have widely adopted many components of the strategic instruction model and that have gathered, carefully gathered data related to their efforts. Shawesville Middle School is the recipient of the 2020 SIM Impact Award in recognition of the school's efforts to take serious challenges in improving literacy and learning among their students. With instructional and coaching support from T-Tech at Virginia Tech and Shawesville Middle School Literacy Reading Coach Anita Alderman, Special Education Teacher Wanda Riddle implemented a program that targeted students with disabilities and general education students with limited reading proficiency. The school's efforts included enrolling students in a reading class that utilized the Fusion Reading Program and the implementation of a word-mapping strategy in all English classes. Student progress was closely monitored using multiple assessment tools throughout the school year. After Year One, students in the first cohort gained an average of 46 to 54 Lexile Points. After Year Two, the same students gained an additional 83 to 97 Lexile Points. Students in the second cohort gained an average of 180 Lexile Points over a two-year time span. Percentage of students with disabilities who are proficient on the reading SOL test has increased 13% since 2016, 2017. These effective strategies have become part of the fabric of Shawesville Middle School. Shawesville Middle School will continue to expand reading comprehension strategies to meet the needs of students with limited reading proficiency as part of future school improvement plans. It's my pleasure this evening to tell you about this award. Mr. Hippel, the Principal, and Mr. Keith, the Assistant Principal, are pictured up there with a photo of the award since they couldn't be here with us this evening, and some quotes from some of the folks from the SIM Impact folks who worked with them. It's my pleasure to present this to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Polly. Just real proud of what they're doing at Shawesville Middle School. They're doing amazing things out there. In fact, we were, I usually don't say this much, and you probably may never hear me say this again, we were upset that they couldn't take SOL tests last year at the end of the year because they were going to be accredited. There's no doubt in our minds. I mean, they were, the data we were getting back, those kids are doing a great job out there. So we're just real proud of what, what that team of teachers and administrative staff are doing. So thanks, thanks to all of them. Next is an athletic update. First, let me say that I'm a huge advocate of high school athletics. They've been a part of my entire life. I was a three-sport athlete in high school. I coached high school sports for nine years while I was a teacher. I officiated high school, high school through Division One College Basketball for 15 years, and I just finished a four-year stint. I was fortunate to be on Virginia High School League Executive Committee as a Region Six Rep. I certainly do understand why our student athletes want to compete. There's no doubt about that. I know that. Thirteen of the 16 Division Superintendents of Region Six worked to create a consistent metric as to whether we compete or not on a week-by-week basis. We meet four times a month, and this will continue to be the topic of conversation. We continue to talk about this. One topic that will be discussed at our next meeting is the question of do we relax standards for outdoor sports due to the science telling us that outdoors is safer than indoors? That's going to be the next topic at our next meeting on, actually, Thursday. We are monitoring this on a weekly basis, and nothing would excite me more than to see our data improve in order to start competing. I can't wait to watch high school sports again. It's one of my most favorite things to do. I know I see a lot of familiar athletes out here, and I've been, I watch you compete, and it's nothing that I have more fun at in this job. And so I've asked Mr. Knott to come up and to give an update on the metrics and educate the Board on how some decisions are made and some other information, and any questions you have, obviously.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer. Just like Dr. Meyer, I am 100% in support of athletics. Quite honestly, when I started teaching, the only reason I did so was so I could coach, and I thought I was going to retire a teacher and coach and maybe an athletic director. I had no idea I'd move into a role such as this. So I love sports. I coached for 17 years. I served as high school and middle school athletic director for 15 years, and I served on the VHSL Executive Committee for six years. And had I not taken this position as HR Director, I would have been the Chair of the Virginia High School League this year. Not sure which would have been worse, to be honest with you. But I am actually really glad that I took this position. As Dr. Meyer said, we are both very vested in athletics, and we want to see our teams and our student athletes compete. To give you an update, the presentation that I am going to share with you tonight is sorry. Presentation I'm going to share with you tonight is very similar to the one that I presented to you on the first of December, but I wanted to expand on that one just a little bit to help everyone understand the metrics that we're using to determine, week by week, whether we're going to be able to play and what phase of practice we will be in. Going back, the VHSL created guidelines for return to play and for participation, and we have worked with our athletic directors, who worked with our coaches, to make sure that we are following those guidelines. These guidelines provide for modifications to athletic and activities, academic activities, hopefully to decrease the potential for any of our student athletes, coaches, administrators who are involved in the activity or sport to not contract COVID. The VHSL received input from the NFHS, National Federation of High Schools, which we are a member of, the state of Virginia is a member of that organization, from their SMAC Committee, which is their Sports Medical, Sports and Medical Committee and Athletic Trainer Committee, the NCAA, the VDH, all kinds of organizations to help develop the return to participation guidelines. And these are sports-specific. There are some general pieces to it, but then they are sports-specific. They tell you for basketball what you can do, for wrestling what you can do, for indoor track what you can do. And so we have instructed our coaches to follow these, and I think our coaches are doing a really good job with that. We did decide to require masks, and that was because of the Governor's Order, Executive Order 72. When that originally, when the VHSL originally saw that order, masks were going to be a mandate. The day the order actually came out in writing, there was some wording in that that did not allow the VHSL to mandate it, so they rescinded that mandate. But based on the recommendation of the Virginia Department of Health and the American Academy of Pediatrics, the VHSL strongly encouraged the use of masks for practice and for competition. As a school division, we looked at the research that's recent, some as recent as the beginning of November, that shows that wearing masks does not inhibit oxygen intake or CO2, getting rid of CO2 significantly. Sure, there's a mental piece to wearing the mask and a discomfort that's something that's not usual, something that is not a normal piece to everyday practice, but we felt like in order for our student athletes to have a chance to be able to play, wearing the mask might give them that chance. So we made it a mandate for Montgomery County. You know, we have coaches who are teachers for us, and not only do we have to think about our, our student athletes and their safety, we've got to think about our coaches. We've got to think about game personnel, if we're allowed to play games. We've got to think about our administrators, who are there working the games and provide a safe environment for them as well. You know, I know, I have talked to some coaches, and we've got coaches who have real concerns about playing. They're scared of taking COVID home to their parents because they get it from their team, their parents or their children, their families. And then we've got coaches who are on the other side of it. They really want to play. So it's not an easy call, but we feel that wearing the mask allows for that protection for not only our student athletes, but all the adults involved as well. As Dr. Meyer mentioned, Region Six Superintendents, which you can see there, the list of all the school divisions that are part of that, they came together and agreed to a return-to-play criteria that included looking at seven-day and 14-day metrics that are on the VDH website. They're the school metrics. These metrics talk about the burden, how difficult or how heavy the burden is for a locality, and they talk about the percentage of positivity, and they talk about the number of cases per 100,000 residents in localities. And so we look at those three numbers, and I've been keeping track of those numbers since we started this. And our numbers have not been, and our burden have not been, at a level where we could compete based on the return-to-play criteria that Region Six Superintendents agreed upon. There is a clause in there that if our burden is, is on the way down for a 14-day period that we could then consider to play, there's also a clause in there that if there is a significant impact in our community due to, say, a nursing home that is causing the burden to be higher, we can work with local health department and determine, yes, we could go ahead and play. This chart here is from This chart here is from December thirty-first. You can see Montgomery County is right here, and we're in this darker blue. That means we're not in a, we're in a high burden area consideration, we're in high burden consideration. We're not at a place where we're trending down in our metrics. If you look across over here at this county here, and I apologize, I can't remember the name of that county, their color is lighter blue. They are trending down. Craig County today was trending down. They had met the criteria for a fourteen-day, excuse me, a seven-day trend in a downward direction. Our numbers in the other two categories, this again is from the thirty-first of December. At that time, our cases per one hundred thousand was five hundred and sixty-nine point eight. That red there is in that high category where we cannot play, that would keep us from playing. The seven point eight at that time was in the moderate category. That would allow us to play. But when you combine all of those metrics, we've got really one saying we could and the rest saying we couldn't. So, therefore, the decision was made not to participate in competition this week. If you were to look at these numbers today, as far as the burden goes, excuse me, we're still in that darker blue today. But if you look at these numbers for today, we have gone down to five hundred and nine point two per one hundred thousand, so that we have been dropping there, but it hasn't been for fourteen days. We're also, though, up in positivity rate to nine point six. If we were to hit ten point zero and higher, we would be in the red in that category. That is the highest risk. The current risk level at nine point six is in a high risk. So, these two numbers together with the high burden prevent us from playing today. Currently, using the criteria to return to play, we're using Phase Three guidance. That means we're not, we're wearing masks, we're staying apart, we're not on top of each other, we're sharing equipment, but we're washing equipment, we're keeping the same partner, those kinds of things for the different sports. We hope very soon that our metrics will get us to a point where we can play. We have actually talked with our ADs about if we get to a point where we don't feel we can play a district schedule, not a Montgomery County schedule, but their district schedule, a Mountain Empire, Pioneer District, or River Ridge District schedule, could we pull together a Montgomery County schedule? And that is something we talked about before Christmas, but we haven't gone there yet because we're still hopeful that we're going to get to play a district schedule for all our schools. Additional mitigation strategies that we have put into place include not allowing spectators. Governor's Order, Executive Order Seventy-two took the number of spectators down to twenty-five, and cheerleaders count as spectators. We chose to say no spectators if we're allowed to play for those competitions. We will also, between JV and varsity games of indoor sports, we will clean the gym completely so that the two new teams coming in to play the second game would have a clean facility to be playing in. We will follow all the mitigation strategies, factors that the VHSL has put into place as far as how close your bench personnel can be, all of those kinds of things, how close your scores can be. We will put it, all our ADs have worked hard to make sure we've got a plan for all of that. You know, our hope is that we'll get to play. Our hope is that we will see competition this year, but right now, based on the metrics that we are currently using, we're just not in a place where we are comfortable saying, yes, we can go out and play right now. Do you have any questions?
So, you mentioned, once we were in a position where we could play, that the facilities would be cleaned, how will we clean those facilities?
So, what we will do is we'll clear out the facilities, the gym, and then our custodians will come in using our backpack sprayers, and they'll spray it down. I've talked with Mr. Krantz, and we, he has estimated that it'll take about twenty minutes to spray down and have it completely dry by the time that twenty minutes is up. And if our, all of our high schools have two gymnasiums, so our teams can be warming up in their auxiliary gym, and at the end of that twenty minutes, come in, finish their warmups in the main gym, and then start playing.
Okay, so. Christiansburg.
Except for Christiansburg, you're right. I'm sorry, they don't. That would be the only school that does, and I'm sorry.
So, what about locker room facilities?
Locker rooms, we're asking everyone to come dressed to play, and then we will limit the number of people that can be in a locker room at any one time. We'll have to provide restroom facilities for our student athletes and our coaches, both visiting and home, but we would ask them to come dressed to play and not change in the locker room, but we would allow them to go in to use the restroom there.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I'm, has been around, I'm sorry, has been around the surrounding counties being able to apparently play and not have a lot of cases or anything like that show up. Have we talked with any of these superintendents or ADs to see, I'm just trying to get a grasp on, are we looking at just because of, are we talking basically numbers as in how many students? Are we talking, what are they doing that is, seems to be working for them, apparently? Or are we even, are we comparing apples and apples, or are we comparing apples and oranges? I'm not real sure. I'm just trying to get a clear picture of how, when I hear other counties are being able to do this and they're not having problems, how are they doing that and not having problems?
They are having problems. Surrounding counties, I know of three surrounding counties that border us that have had to suspend seasons due to COVID outbreaks on teams for periods of time, some, and I, one was a long time ago, right before the season started, and they haven't had any problems since. So, my guess is they learned from that, but right now, we've got one school division that borders us that's not allowing one of its teams to play at all right now. So, they're seeing some issues with spread amongst the teams.
And explaining something too, because this is a confusion to some folks. We are placed in Region Six for our superintendent group, and that's mostly southwest and south. The thing is, our teams play, several of our teams, especially Auburn, and some of Eastmont play east of us, where Blacksburg and Christiansburg mostly play in that Region Six. And so, I think they're Region Seven superintendent group. And so, that's what makes it difficult for us too, is we're not in that group, so they made a different decision as a group of superintendents in that group. And then we're a county that's sort of split because of our location and size of schools. That makes it difficult to be consistent, but we did want a sense of consistency with all of our schools. So, I know it's tough to see some of their teams in their district play, but I've been in touch with border superintendents to the east, because I know all those as well, and all of them, they're starting to have some serious problems right now. They're shutting their teams down because of it.
And that would include practices. With right now, we can continue practicing.
Right.
And if, even if it's one school that gets shut down, or one division, school division, that means no practices for anybody. And I personally think that the practices provide a lot of mental health benefits for our students.
Yes.
And I would, I would hate to see that be taken, have to go away because we, just because we weren't being safe.
Right. And I'll say this, we were the first region in the Region Six to allow practice, and we did that by allowing the stifles for coaches back in the summertime, because we knew it was important to get kids in and get them active, and that makes a huge difference to be with their teammates, at least. And so, we were the first ones to actually do that. And so, but I know, you know, it is, it's not fun to practice a lot and then never get that game. I understand that. When you keep practicing and practicing, never, never get to get on the floor against somebody and compete, and you get tired of playing your teammates every day, and I understand that. But, of course, we are, there's some caution that we have to take at this time.
Danny, I have another quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
I know that the other counties have allowed risk assessments to be done, giving more options to families and parents about letting their children play. Have we even thought about, I know there's been some type of waivers in some counties of eligibility or liability that would give options to families who maybe felt that they, you know, could play or would want to play, that would release us from any type of, and I know some of those have been in practice. I don't know if we've even considered that, or if that's even anything we can consider at this point, but I was just curious as to if there has been any discussion on that issue as well.
We have not had any discussion on that at this, up to this time, but certainly that is something we can look at if the board wants us to.
I would think that that's, so if you, so you're saying, Dana, if I may make sure I understand, so I, as a parent, am releasing M C P S of liability if something happens to, if my child gets COVID, something to that effect?
Yeah, I don't know su verbatim what exactly the.
But that's kind of the con.
Those contracts pertain.
Right.
I do know that I think they have been available for some of the counties that are allowing to play, and I'm not even really sure legally what that adheres to as far as a contract between the family or the student and the school. To be quite honest with you, I just know that that's been given as, I guess that kind of gives more of a risk assessment and a little, maybe more options to families or to parents or students even than what they would have normally if it's been governed by or made mandated by the schools, per se.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's good.
I guess the reason I ask is that, so, that means that gets us off the hook for that particular child, but what about if that child contracts COVID and then goes to school, and then their teacher contract? The thing is that you can't isolate, even if the students play, you can't isolate them from the rest of the school and the rest of the children in the school. And I guess that's where my concern would be, that we, I know that people will say, well, just if I want to take that risk with my child, then I should be able to make that decision to do that.
Right.
But I see it's sort of like the mask situation. It's like, you know, I don't want to wear a mask, and so I'm not going to wear one, but then that, that is, that could cause problems for others around. And so, I guess that's where I'm not sure that concept.
Right. And I was going to see if maybe Mr. Knott could provide maybe a little more information on that particular.
Yeah, we'll look, we'll look into that. And one thing, actually, during our registration process, we had a release form for everyone to sign. I don't know if that would cover that. However, our attorneys did say that a lot of times the release forms do not hold up anyway. That is an issue with those. It's something you mentioned, Ms. Cass, I'd like to expand on. We've already had situations of coaches who are teachers who are now out, and they're not in classrooms teaching now.
Yeah.
And because they had, they're either being quarantined or tested positive due to team interaction. And so, now we don't have them as teachers.
And we're already down in teachers, correct? I haven't seen the numbers lately, but I know that.
Yeah, we're at quarantine today. We have fifty some.
We were up to sixty just a few minutes ago. I got an email just a few minutes.
That's went up since this morning, when we talked, yeah. That's really something that's, we're struggling with too.
Ms. Barton, one thing I did want to make clear, our students do have to fill out a Virginia High School League physical and parental consent form, and in that, part of, that risk piece that you're talking about is part of that form. I don't know if that would cover COVID or not, but certainly if we were to look at anything like that, we would definitely work with our lawyer to make sure it was a legally binding piece.
Right.
Because if it's not worth the paper it's written on, it's really not worth doing. But I did want to make sure you knew that they do have to sign and fill out that and have a doctor sign off saying that they're physically able to participate.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I think for me, I've had serious concerns about supporting something like that, because I think we have to look at what, you know, what is the goal here? And I come back to what Ms. Graham had said, that, you know, the goal is to keep kids involved in sports to the highest level that we possibly can. I don't even, I could say safely, or maybe as a compromise, taking on some, you know, some risk, and it's, you know, just because people are individually saying, well, I'll take that risk on, you know, yeah, they're taking that risk on, but you're talking about relatively young people with, you know, also relatively young parents. The real problem is the spread of the virus in our community, in our counties, in the areas, and that's kind of out of control right now across the country. And so, I think we all have to kind of buckle down on that. So, you know, this idea that, you know, me signing a waiver for my kid and taking on that risk is somehow a solution to this, to this problem, I think it's really problematic for me. I think when, when you see, you know, that especially younger children and possibly even teens are, and college students even, are asymptomatic vectors for the virus, that, you know, you're really just, you're not, you're not really taking the risk on, you're just passing it on to other people in the community. I'd have a problem with that.
So, yeah, I was a student athlete. My siblings, family members, children were athletes, and I was one of those who liked to practice, but I didn't want to practice for the whole season. So, I get that, but I also understand the safety around this and the spread that could happen in our community, especially right now. So, as torn as I can be about, yeah, I want to get on that court, I want to get on that track, right? I want to see who I can beat, right? But I just cannot imagine, you know, us spreading this in the community because, you know, our children want to get out there and play. I understand it. If this was my son in this situation, he would be having a fit, okay? It wouldn't last for long, but he would have a fit, not being able to get on that wrestling match mat. So, I do feel for you all. I feel for the parents. Going and watching your children play, participate, win, be there for the defeats or whatever, it's huge. It's huge. I've lived it, but the key word is here, lived it. And being young and healthy gives you a big advantage, but your grandparents, your parents, and other folks in the community, it's not worth the risk at this point.
Any other questions?
Do you see us possibly, and I'm not trying to say that I don't care about the safety of anyone, because of course I do, but I want to look at the risk assessments on both sides, because I think it's the equally of the risk of playing. There's another equal side of risk assessment. If they're not playing, what are these kids doing? And with them not having the option to get back in school, because personally, I think getting these kids back in school should be our number-one priority. And I'm not saying that sports isn't important. I was an athlete. I love sports. My daughter loves sports. I'm all about it. If there's any way that we could possibly come to some kind of safe compromise between parents and students and possibly our faculty, staff, or coaches, because we can't play games if we don't have our coaches and we don't have our, you know, Umps, and we don't have those type of people. I feel like if we can compromise, whether that means, okay, we can play, but you're going to have to wear a mask the whole time you play, some kind of meeting in the middle. I'd like to think that hopefully maybe we can work towards that point and try to see, you know, at least say we made our best effort and what we can do to try to get these kids back to doing what they love, and what some of them are counting on is maybe their only way to college, possibly.
Certainly, that's our desire too. We really do want to see our student athletes participate and be able to play. This is thirty-seven years of working. This has probably been the most difficult, you know, decisions I've had to make. Thank goodness for Dr. Meyer's guidance and support and help, but it's, this is not Thank goodness for Dr. Meyer's guidance and support and help, but it's, this is not fun.
No, I can attest to that. I agree with you 100%. There is no win-win situation here at all.
And I do feel for our student athletes. I was a student athlete as well and, you know, I know how important it is and I'll just, I'll close with just, we really do want to see them out there on the court now that they're on the field.
And I know we do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we will have public address. At this time and at each of our regulars, regularly scheduled meetings, the school board sets aside up to 30 minutes for residents, students, and employees to address the board about issues pertaining to public education in Montgomery County. Each speaker is allotted three minutes to speak. The screens throughout the room and on the laptop will indicate when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining and when the three minutes has passed. As a reminder, the board does not respond to speakers during public address. We currently have 16 people signed up for public address. I would like to remind the board and our speakers about our updated public address procedures. At the end of the 30 minutes, the board may vote to extend public address in 30-minute intervals. After the first 30-minute extension, public address will continue at the end of the meeting. If there are signups, each person is called up in the order they signed up. I will be calling the first speaker and then the one following so that you can be ready. So to begin, I have Marsha Elliott and Nikki Garland, and after them, Joseph Joyce. If you'll come to the podium and state your name and address. I guess, Mr. Joyce, if you want to come on, thank you.
I want to thank the board for allowing me to speak to you today. It's obvious-
I'm sorry, could you state your name and address? I'm sorry.
My name is Joe Joyce. I live in Blacksburg at 2709 Mount Vernon Lane.
Thank you.
I want to thank the board for allowing me to speak to you today. I communicated with you all last night with a very passionate communication and email. My talking points will be abbreviated from that email. I come to you today not only as a parent, but as a practicing emergency room physician living and working in southwest Virginia. As physicians, we are trained to use critical reasoning skills, apply those skills to the data, make clinical judgment, and make recommendations. Not all physicians agree. That is very clear. But I do believe that the most qualified individual in our community for you guys to be taking direction from is Dr. Bissell. I've watched your board meetings and I've witnessed board members interrupt one another, and I have heard you express that you know better. That type of behavior is not in line with the values that are professed, that are expressed on your board webpage. We all want to move forward. I do, my kids do, you do, teachers do, the community wants to move forward. The best way to do that is focus on the facts. I work on the front line, I review the data, I see these patients, I see the virus. A small percentage of people get sick, a smaller percentage get admitted to the hospital and ICU, and yes, unfortunately, some people die. The vast majority of patients convalesce at home. The risk to the under 20-year-old population, which is our students, is very, very low. Let's switch a little bit now and talk about school-specific data. We now have data that shows that what Dr. Bissell believed in August was correct. If you follow the protocols that are put in place, the risk to students, the risk of student to student, student to staff, and staff to staff transmission of the virus is low. Our data is in line with the national data. The risk to the teachers is low. The data supports even opening the schools when you have a high degree of virus transmission in our community. We all know this current school model is bad. We all want it to end. I do and you do. For those families and students that are gripped with fear, we all have options. They have options. You created those. Many families and students want to return to full-person learning. Many students want their extracurricular activities to move forward. There is data to support that. There is data to support moving forward with extracurricular activities and with sports. That is clear.
Excuse me, Mr. Joyce, your time is up.
May I finish with two statements, please?
No, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, though. Next, I have Kate Henley and Monica Hunter. Just state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Kate Henley. I live at 980 Beaver Drive in Christiansburg, Virginia. First, I want to thank you all for letting me come in and speak this evening. I'm speaking basically in regards to my son and the other seniors across the county. This is their opportunity to showcase themselves. They didn't get a spring, they didn't get a summer. N C A A rules have changed. They're not allowed to go face-to-face, they don't get to go visit campuses, and for a lot of these kids, this is their way to go to college because the burden of cost is, you know, something their parents can't do. I have a son in college already. He wears the mask every day, in school, in class. He stays in his apartment most of the time. He's at O D U in one of the areas in the state that was really like overwhelmed with this virus. He's perfectly fine. He, you know, he goes to class every day. Our kids deserve the ability to go to class every day. I mean, if we can go out, our kids can go to Walmart, they can go to the mall, we've all been out and about. There's no reason to make them suffer more by not being able to compete. It's, it's great that they can go to practice and they can go to weightlifting, but the fact that they can't actually compete just kind of, you know, it's like, what's the purpose? You know, to go, to show up, to practice day in and day out? Nobody wants to practice for no reason. Their reasons are, they want to play, they want to compete, they're watching their friends across, you know, different counties competing and playing, and they don't see it as fair, like why are they being punished almost for not, you know, living in Montgomery County? We're the only county in the area. We do have four schools, which I understand, and they're all different, and they all play in different areas. Roanoke County voted tonight, they are allowing them to go back to play. So we're just asking that our kids get that same opportunity if we could go back. You know, they're wearing masks, we've agreed, you know, it's fine, we'll stay home. We won't go and watch our kids play. We'll watch on TV. I look around this room, there's more people sitting in this room tonight than what is allowed inside of our gyms during competition. We have 50 people, that's twice as many people that can go in that large gym that is significantly larger than this particular room. So in that regard, if we can put this many people in a small room, why can't kids go into a gym, play against each other with masks on and all the temperature checks and everything else? It, you know, it just doesn't make sense. Thank y'all.
Thank you. After Ms. Hunter, I have Brian Sutton.
I had to print out my stuff so I could make sure I'd remember to tell you everything. So I'm Monica Hunter, and I live at 270 Oak Tree Boulevard in Christiansburg. I have a three-sport senior that's been active since he was six years old in all three sports. I'm here tonight to ask you to reconsider the current matrix that is being used to determine if our kids are allowed to compete. The week-by-week decision sets them up for disappointment after disappointment. Our students and coaches have done everything, asked of them in compliance with this mitigation. Masks, sanitation of equipment, temperature checks. I would venture to say that students that have jobs and work with the public are probably at more of a risk of getting COVID than our student athletes. M C P S uses engage, encourage, and empower as a tagline. This is exactly what sports do. Another point that I want to bring to your attention is an equity issue. Students are often paying to play A A U or travel baseball showcase, showcase system. Not everyone can afford to do that. By not allowing them to play, you are essentially discriminating against a segment of our population that have no other means to participate in sports. In a previous meeting, it was reported that the number of Ds and Fs were on the rise. Again, with sports, that's not an issue. Student athletes are required to maintain passing grades. They are held accountable by their coaches and their teammates to perform in the classroom. I serve on the advisory committee for our secondary education and would like to read a message from Mr. Brad Epperali, which I think you all know is a Blacksburg parent and the director of our Parks and Rec here in Christiansburg. He states, "I urge each of you to take a step back and truly try to feel what these children are going through. While you were in school, I imagine a majority of you were involved in some type of extracurricular activity, sports, band, clubs, debate teams, and others. Think back to those times. What memories do you have? Do you remember the lessons that you learned? Do you remember the friends and experiences that you shared? Well, if you do, then you are getting something that today's students are not getting. Please don't let this continue. It can stop and have a new beginning. Our students and our communities need this more than ever. Please drop the current matrix and let them play." In closing, our athletes, our coaches, trainers, our athletic directors have been committed. M C P S, please be committed to them. Thank you.
Thank you. After Ms. Sutton, after Mr. Sutton, I have Aiden Guthrie.
I'm here to speak on behalf of the 100-plus Montgomery County students that came out here tonight. First, I'd like to thank the school board for adding athletics back to the agenda. It's my understanding this wasn't part of the original meeting agenda for tonight, but was added late last week, so that means a lot to us, shows you're listening, shows you care, so thank you for that. Tonight, you've already heard from several people with different backgrounds, parents, you might hear from some students later, you heard from a doctor, I know some nurses are planning on speaking from the medical field. Personally, I'm not in the medical profession, but what I do know is kids and sports. I have four kids, I have a daughter that just graduated from Auburn last spring, and then I have three boys. I have a senior, a sophomore, and a sixth grader. And, you know, last spring was horrible for my daughter, right, for all the seniors. The entire world shut down. She missed out on spring sports and senior prom and roaming the hallways with her friends, and we had to drive through graduation. My son, who was a junior at the time, was on the basketball team, made it all the way to the state championship game, was at V C U, first time in our high school's history or at least 40 years, and that afternoon, the governor called a state of emergency and they weren't able to play. For the record, if Auburn had played that game, we were going to destroy Matthews and we'd have beat them by 20 points. Just want to make sure that's noted here. Hopefully they have the chance to, next month, to redeem themselves. So why did I say that? So basically, you know, at that time, the entire world was in this together. Everyone was at the same stage. We have this new virus, we're learning about it, how do we, you know, defend against it? You know, what are the characteristics of it? But since then, you know, fast forward 10 months, and we're in a different state, right? Restaurants and churches and travel sports and schools and bars, they're opened up. You know, travel sports, the speaker previously just mentioned that, they've been going strong for months locally and nationwide. You name the sport, you can participate in it if you can afford to. And that's one of the problems, a lot of kids really depend on school sports, high school sports, juniors and seniors to be showcased, to have video, to be noticed and recruited by colleges. And it's an opportunity for a lot of kids, whether it's D1, D2, D3, to continue their education. That's greatly important. To me personally, sports are more than just sports. For local rural areas like ours, it's the heartbeat of the community. Friday night football games, watching your basketball team go to state for the first time in 40 years, or a girls' soccer's team having the chance to win their first high school state championship ever. Sports keeps kids active, keeps them showing up to school. If you don't have the grades, you don't play. Provides mentors and helps with college degrees.
I'm sorry, Mr. Sutton, your time is up.
In closing, let them play. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Drake, could you, could you spray our microphone, please? Thank you. So I have Aiden Guthrie, and then Michelle Keister.
Thank you. I'm not hitting you when I start? You're good. Good. I didn't see an Aiden, so I'm Michelle Keister.
Okay, thank you.
I'm at 225 Windsor Drive in Christiansburg. I'd like to say I'm the parent of two teenagers that attend Christiansburg High School. In addition, I come to you today as an E R nurse, a professor at New River Community College, but mostly I represent my children and their peers that need sports. I bring to you that in 2018, suicide was the second-leading cause of death in persons aged 15 to 24. The National Vital Statistics provided by the CDC reports that from 2007 to 2018, suicide committed by persons aged 10 to 24 increased by 57.4%. The United Health Foundation reported in 2019 survey that 18.8% of high school students considered suicide and 8.9% attempted this. Outside of what we think are normal risk factors for suicide thoughts and attempts, two of the big things are lack of support and social isolation for these thoughts and attempts. We put this on a local level, we have approximately 3,000 students between the four high schools. If we're looking at this, this means that 560 of these students, based on statistics, have had thoughts and 266 have attempted. How can we as parents help them to not have these thoughts, have these feelings? Many times we think of being healthy as lack of physical ailments, and I can tell you that I've witnessed very sick people that have not had one physical condition. I have seen what depression, anxiety, social isolation, and lack of support can do to our youth. I've taken care of teens that have attempted suicide and have performed self-harm behaviors as an attempt, as an outlet. Many children, adolescents, and teens get positive reinforcement, encouragement on the ballfield, track, gym, and being part of a team. They have a sense of belonging and a sense of self-worth because that's where they get it from, when they can't get it from home. We have to provide a balance for these students between their physical and their mental health. I get that COVID is real. I see it every time I step in the foot of the emergency department. I see death, I see the positive tests, and I see the heartache. I also see members of our community choosing to go out to eat, choosing to go out of town, choosing to go to the store, choosing not to social distance, and sadly, choosing not to wear a mask. At what point in time do we let the parents and students choose to play? As a novice educator, I applaud you all in the administrative setting for making the hard decisions based on the uncertainties that COVID is giving. There are challenges every day. Your flexibility and updates to the ever-growing obstacles in this pandemic have given us, you have given us as to be commended. You have been progressing and progressive in allowing our students to return to school. It's now time to allow them to progress to sports. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Ms. Drake, could you spray again? And for the- And for the speakers coming next, please make sure you keep your mask on. Thank you. Next, I have Elizabeth Tuck and Catherine Hoover, and then after that, Brad Hill. If you could state your name and address and make sure you keep your mask on, please.
I'm Elizabeth Tuck. I live at 1825 Wythe Lane, Christiansburg.
I'm Catherine Hoover, Ellen Christiansburg, 1020 St. Clair Lane.
My name is Elizabeth. I go to Christiansburg High School and play on the girls' varsity basketball team.
My name is Katie. I go to Christiansburg Middle School and play for the Christiansburg High School's girls' basketball team.
Sports are important to our community for various reasons. Some of these reasons are mental health, physical health, and learning how to work well with others.
I understand sports are optional. Parents have every right to be scared of COVID-19 and to not allow their child to play sports.
Some of these families are willing to take the risk and let their athlete do what they love while growing their character. Please let each family make their decision to let their player play or not.
If we follow the guidelines that VHSL and the Health Department have given us, we can lower the risk of giving COVID-19.
Mental health is a big concern, and some students rely on sports as an escape for the stresses of life.
I know it gives me and Elizabeth something to look forward to and is the highlight of our day. We play because we love the sport and being with our friends.
We have been practicing and doing open gyms since July. No one on our team has been affected.
I've been playing AAU, following the mask and social distancing guidelines given to us. None of my teammates have been sick with COVID because of us playing.
I have played basketball before COVID-19, and I want to play Darren and after. Let me choose if I'm willing to take the chance.
My team has followed the rules and guidelines you've given to us, and we will continue to do so. Find a way to let us play, please.
Montgomery County, please let us play.
Thank you. Now Brad Hill and then after that, Matt Simmons.
My name is Brad Hill, and I live at 3855 Eagle Country Drive in Reiner, Virginia. I am speaking tonight concerning the recent plea to begin the sports seasons in Montgomery County. I understand many districts and school divisions in our area are playing or have recently reversed decisions to play. Now, having coached many sports, I am very much a proponent of athletics. I have personally witnessed the many benefits athletics provide our youth. I truly believe that playing sports can teach those involved wonderful life lessons. However, even though I'm a coach and proponent of playing high school sports, I am first an educator. Last March, MCPS made a decision to not hold all students accountable for work done in the last quarter of the year, a decision prompted by the sudden change to online learning in order to best help students adjust and cope with the closing of in-class instruction, a decision that at the time may have seemed wise, but now has come with unforeseen consequences. I'm here tonight to encourage MCPS to not make another decision that will have similar consequences. As I stated before, I am a coach and a proponent of playing and playing now. However, and I stress this, be careful of the message you are sending to our students. Are sports more important than academics? I'm sure I know your answer to that question. Then knowing that answer, if it is deemed appropriate to put athletes on a court or mat, then we should also be willing to do the same in the classroom. What am I encouraging MCPS to do is to make it feasible for all athletes to attend every class every day as they would have before this pandemic hit. If it is okay to put these students in a competitive environment face-to-face, then it's okay to do what schools were built to do first, and that's to educate our children in person. I implore the board to have all athletes come in person every day. If it is in opposition to state mandates to do such, then I encourage you to fight with all your heart with the State Board of Education to make this work. Now, as I stated earlier, there are many benefits that can come out of athletics, but what I am asking you to do is not only fight to get them on the court or on the mat, but also fight to get them in the classroom. There are so many great repercussions that can come from this in a positive way for all students involved. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, I have Matt Simmons and then Brian Taylor.
I live on 230 Hamilton Ave, Northwest Christiansburg, in Christiansburg. I'm a student athlete at Christiansburg High School. It's an interesting story for me because I just moved here from New York to further my high school career. Due to certain COVID circumstances, we probably weren't going to have a season back in New York, so I was relying a lot on the convenience of having a season here. This is a big year for all of us student athletes, juniors and seniors especially. I feel like it's been a really difficult time for everybody, but what's been keeping us together has been sports. For me personally, the sacrifices I had to make, I left behind a lot of family, friends, coaches, teammates, and I basically sacrificed the whole social element to try to increase my chances at playing at the next level, which is college. It's really been an emotional outlet and a coping mechanism for everybody, I feel like. Sports in general, it's always been, but now more than ever, whether it's been me playing basketball by myself at the rec center or playing with my teammates at practice, we always tried. Basketball has always helped us find some sort of sense of hope and optimism, and I do want to thank my teammates for being here and supporting me and welcoming me with open arms because they made this transition as easy as it was. I do want to touch on the correlation between having a sports season and succeeding in school in the academic aspect, where I believe that motivation, our motivation in school comes a lot from being able to play in sports. Personally, me, this has been my best academic year by a significant amount because making the transition that I made, I really didn't have a choice to fail in this sense. So I needed, and we all know that getting to our dream school is more than just succeeding in athletic performance, it's also academic performance. So I didn't really have a choice. I have to make my parents proud. They worked so hard for me, I got to pay them back. You know what I mean? Not everybody can pay for certain colleges that they want to go to, so scholarships are very important. I do want to thank all the teachers, also our Christiansburg High School and administration for also making this transition easier for me. We all made it, all as student athletes, made it this far, and we worked so hard. I feel like having our season would be the last piece of the puzzle, would be the last piece of the puzzle. I appreciate everybody's time and consideration. MCPS, please let us play.
Thank you. I have Brian Taylor and then Kelly Babcock.
My name is Brian Taylor, and I live at 610 Warren Court in Christiansburg. I am a senior at Christiansburg High School, but I am here tonight to advocate for all the athletes in Montgomery County. Please let us play the sports that we love. I am lucky enough to be able to afford to travel for wrestling, and I have also seen throughout the summer and fall that it can be done safely by following the COVID guidelines set forth by the state. However, there are many athletes that can't afford the expenses to travel, and not allowing them to play for their high school team is affecting them the most. It is also taking away opportunities for many athletes to excel and exceed beyond high school at the college level. There are many counties around us in our 3A state region that have already begun competing, including Pulaski, Radford City, Floyd, Bodatot, New Kent, Warren County, and Virginia Beach Public Schools, just to name a few. I personally would like the opportunity to compete my senior season, especially in the state wrestling tournament, where I have placed in the top six the past two years and hope to achieve my goal of being a state champion. I'm looking at possibly wrestling at the college level, and without the opportunity to compete my senior year, I may lose out on opportunities to wrestlers who are able to compete. I am here asking you today to please let us play. Thank you.
Thank you. After Kelly Babcock, I have Colby Brown. Kelly Babcock?
My name's Kelly. State my name. My name's Kelly Babcock. I live at 1861 Augusta National in Blacksburg. I didn't know I was able to speak, so I quickly brought up the letter that I have actually sent you all. Maybe you read it. Okay, talk fast. Hi, my name's Kelly Babcock. My husband and I have three sons that are all student athletes, two of which are students still at Blacksburg High School. One is on the soccer team, also a diver and a swimmer for Blacksburg. My other one is a basketball player, and this is his senior year. We have been so frustrated and anxious over the last few months. We have a very strong connection to athletics and what is working and not working in our area. We completely understand the seriousness and the concern over spreading the virus, never to diminish the necessity for safety in our community. Regarding high school sports, another week of not playing? Why? We're following protocols as they are in the surrounding areas, yet we in the MCPS system remain bound to these unattainable numbers that have been put before us. While other kids have begun to gain a small semblance of normalcy again, ours remain unable to take the next step. The virus is certainly serious and incredibly concerning, but the Virginia Health Department and doctors, they're currently giving approval for athletic events in their plain sight as long as mitigation strategies are being followed. We're following them. How is that acceptable for areas with larger population and athletic attendance but not recognized by our own athletic leaders, our own local leaders, excuse me? Allowing these kids to play sports right now should be of immediate concern and at the top of the list for our local leaders. The last nine months have undoubtedly taken a toll on our nation, but as allowed by and approved by our Virginia Health Department and Governor, our kids and their parents should be given the opportunity that our local neighbors have been given. Emotionally, physically, and mentally, the kids need this. The pandemic has taken away so much already, as you know. Don't continue to take away the small sense of normalcy that we can get. Oh, oh, hold up. I truly want all the kids to be able to play sports this year. Of immediate concern and importance to me right now are seniors. This is it for some of them, including mine. The area of academic and athletic school participation is coming to a close, and you are letting this slip away. It's not just a game. It's an opportunity. It's an opportunity for growth physically, yes, but also one for learning teamwork, discipline, goals, routines, the highs and lows of wins and losses, and how to handle it as a team together. Our kids learn how to be leaders or strong supporting players. For some, it's the only time that they feel love and support. They feel needed and wanted as part of a group. They work hard on their bodies, they eat better, they keep their grades up so they can continue to play and represent the school that they love. Sports brings people together, families together. I personally have made some of the best friends ever by sitting on the sidelines, yelling in the bleachers, and sitting in our cars even for this last soccer season. For some of these kids, sports absolutely changes the trajectory of their lives and the relationships that they desperately need right now.
I'm sorry, Ms. Babcock, your time is up.
Let them play.
Thank you. I'm sorry, can you say that again? We've reached the end of the first 30 minutes. Okay, so we need to have a motion to continue for the next 30 minutes? If the board wishes to entertain a motion, address for 30 minutes. I think we only have, just for information, one, two, three, four left sign up, just so you can have the right information to make your decision. So do I have a motion?
I'd like to mention that we allow the rest of the speakers to speak.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we can proceed. So next, I have Colby Brown, and after that, William Holloman. State your name and address, please.
My name is Colby Brown. I go to Christiansburg High School, 475 Harless Street, Christiansburg, Virginia. Good evening. Again, my name is Colby Brown, and I'm a student athlete at Christiansburg High School. First, I'd like to thank the board for your continued support and emphasis on the health of our students and our faculty and staff. Knowing that you've heard the arguments for why student athletes should be able to play our respective sports, I am now asking that the board have a little bit of trust, trust in its athletes and in our coaches. We're willing to give anything to get back to doing what we love most, and because of that, I know that we are willing to follow every guideline and every order given to maintain a safe school, safe facilities, and safe environments here at MCPS. I know that this school division has the capability to provide students with an experience that they can look back on and be proud of, and I have seen this firsthand, and I am positive this can be done while also maintaining the safety in our community. So with this and a little bit of trust, I ask that you please let us play. And since I do see that I have some more time, I will add that this upcoming season, I'm depending on it, and it will, it's the deciding factor if I can play college sports. And based off of that, I would also like to add that we, as a community, we can do a lot better. We can do a lot better when we go out or just not going out at all, wearing your mask above your nose, washing your hands. We can do a lot better. If we are expecting these people up here to take our concerns seriously, then we have to take their concerns seriously, and we have to take the concerns of professionals seriously. And it shows a little bit of hypocrisy if we're not willing to do what we ask others to do. So with that, again, I ask that you all continue to take the student athletes' concerns seriously, and I mean, I know you guys can see how much we really want to play. And with that, again, I ask that as a community, including myself, we do a lot better in following the guidelines and concerns of professionals. Thank you.
Thank you. I have William Holloman, and then after that, Mike Royal.
Will Holloman, I've lived in Blacksburg for years. I'm not going to give out my specific address. I'll start out by saying, sure, let them play. They have the option not to play if they have compromised family members. As teachers, we do not have that option. I'm a fourth grade teacher at Harding Avenue. I love my job there. I hope to work there until I retire. I come from a long line of educators. My mother was a teacher and administrator. My grandmother was a teacher. My grandfather was a principal. He still, I love to hear in the stories of how he walked down the hall with a paddle in his hand, different times then, as we are in now. Teachers are getting this virus more and more. Students are getting this virus more and more. Teachers and students are having to isolate from their families more and more. Many had to isolate through the holidays. I also had to isolate, and I will share that experience with you in a moment. Our schools are like Petri dishes and incubators for many types of viruses, especially this one. We must go fully remote. It seems to be a near unanimous opinion among teachers. It is important to explain some unexpected things that happen with no malintention in an elementary school, such as a random nosebleed behind a mask, then the student is conflicted between, do I take off my mask and touch my face, which I've been instructed not to do, or do I let the blood drip through my mask and onto my Chromebook? I see this about once a week. A cute little hand sneaking behind the mask to pick their nose and wipe their finger on a nearby surface. I could go on and on with examples. It's a natural instinct. Kids will be kids. They want to be close to each other. This is not an issue of student behavior. This is, if you think otherwise, or a teacher's ability to manage behavior, ask yourself if you've ever taught in an elementary school. I had direct exposure at my school, and I had to be isolated in my basement. I could not put into words the emotions of hearing your infant baby cry, and you can't do anything but listen. It was torture that will break any man or woman down.
Thank you. Mike Royal and then Sandra Royal.
Mike Royal, live at 4121 Salisbury Lane in Reiner. I'd like to talk about two aspects, really, of the sports discussions we're having here this evening, one being the safety that I have seen. We'll talk about that first. As some of the students have spoken before, they have talked about the ability to do the travel sports. Their parents have the means to allow them to do that. I am fortunate that I have been able to do that with my children as well. Since August, I have traveled to South Carolina nine times. Since August, I have traveled to South Carolina nine times to play basketball. I have traveled to Richmond, Harrisonburg, North Carolina, a couple of times, all for large, multi-day, excuse me, basketball tournaments, in which most settings, we are talking in excess of 500 people in the venues. Rules were set in place as to what was expected of participants, coaches, and fans as well. You were required to give email addresses and phone numbers in the event that anything should happen, as far as a COVID outbreak or whatever. They could start doing contact tracing and contacting everyone. From August to late November, not once did I receive an email, a phone call, any update that would indicate that there was an outbreak. And multiple times, we were in tournaments where the same teams would compete against each other, or they were in the same facility anyway. And again, no transmission was committed. In those instances, at every tournament, no masks were required. No masks were required on the bench, only the coaches were required. Immediately following the contest, masks were required to be put back on. Fans were asked to social distance, and then you were asked to leave the facility. All right, so there was certain protocols that were in place. If we adhere to those protocols, we should be able to get through a season of any sport if we adhere to these safety protocols that are put into place. We've done it in places where we are requiring, or where many, many more participants and fans and so on were in attendance compared to the only 25 that we're allowing, plus the participants and coaches and so on. The second piece that I want to talk about quickly is...
I'm sorry, your time is up, Mr. Royal, sorry. Thank you. And now we have Sandra Royal.
Hello, my name is Sandra Royal. Although I did ask, I live in 4121 Salisbury Lane in Reiner. Although I did a request to speak, I didn't really think I was going to get the opportunity. So I'll just touch on what I came off the top of my head. I have worked throughout the pandemic on the first, on the front lines at Renner Memorial Hospital. I know that COVID is real. I also know who, what, who COVID affects. I know that COVID, there are people that are at more risk. There are COVID-related situations that aren't addressed. There are variables that go into the COVID counting as to one person being tested several times, and it's counted differently. I feel like if you're not on the front lines, you don't really have a good insight as to what COVID is compared to some of the other things that people are susceptible to. I feel like I do want my children to play sports. More importantly, I want my children to be in school and have an education. I have seen a decline, and not only my children, but other children, their friends, have a lack of interest, a lack of motivation. They appear to be lazy, and they want to do as little as possible. And I totally agree with the shutdown 100% in March because healthcare and medicine needed to determine what was happening and what we needed to do. We needed to flatten the curve, and we needed to get supplies. And I worked without supplies on the front lines, so I understand. But I also stand, understand that there are a lot of, there are a lot of problems and repercussions that can come when you do this to this population that is our next generation. Our next generation that we need to depend on to do the hard things, to take the risk, to learn how to create a vaccine. We need children that are willing to say, I'm going to go take care of that. I'm going to go take care of that patient. I'm going to go and do that research. I'm not going to lay in my bed and go to school. I'm going to get up and get ready, and I'm going to go, I'm going to see my classmates, and I'm going to give them positive energy through the day. I'm going to play with my, my sports cowork, I mean, my sports teammates, and when they, when they mess up on the court or in the field, I'm going to pick them up, and I'm going to give them the confidence to get back up again. I feel like sports is a precursor for working in the workplace. I feel like when you're able to work as a team, when you're able to problem solve, forgive, understand, respect, and have dignity for all those who are trying to work together as a team, that is what you do in the workforce, and that is what you do in college. And I feel like our kids need to be prepared to be the next generation.
Thank you, Ms. Royal, your time is up.
Please let our kids go to school and play and have a chance.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Garretson. Public address is now closed. Okay, you see in front of you a list of items for consent. Unless there is anything that needs to be pulled from the consent agenda, then we will consider the consent items approved. Is there any discussion regarding the consent items? Okay, hearing and seeing none, we will move to payment of the bills. Do I have a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Thank you, any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we have payment of the bills. Since this is our first meeting of the month, we have time for board member reports. So if anyone would like to speak.
Graham, we have paid the bills.
I did pay the bills.
We just approved that, Ms. Karan.
We did?
Yes, ma'am.
What about the... There was something else you skipped, though, the Montgomery County...
That was part of the consent items.
Yeah, oh, that was, okay, never mind.
It's okay, folks, it's okay.
Confused.
It's the beginning of the year. It's a Monday, right? It's a Monday. No, just kidding.
There was...
Okay, so if any board members would like to speak, please go ahead.
I don't have anything at this time.
Okay. If not, then we'll move on to the agenda. Would you like to say something soon?
Actually, Dana had her hand up first.
Okay.
Okay, I'll be extremely short.
Sure.
I just want to echo how proud I am of Shawsville Middle School and their Sims Award. That's my district, those are my kids. Of course, every, all of them are my kids, but just, these kids have worked so hard and have come so far, and I just want to say a big congratulations to Principal Hippel, Vice Principal Keith. You guys keep up the great work, you guys are doing fantastic, and just know how proud we are of all of you.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, go ahead, Sue.
As we begin a new year, I'd like to take a, just a couple of minutes, it's a short paragraph that I wrote, to make a statement not only to my fellow board members, but to the community at large. So I'm going to read it because it's easier for me to do that. "I've now completed my first year on the school board. To say it has not been exactly what I expected would be an understatement. We've had challenges of magnitude that's not been seen in recent years, and with those challenges have come a great deal of angst for not only me, but our entire community. I was told you have to have a tough skin to do this job. And boy, sorry, and boy, they weren't kidding. Over the past year, I've been called rude, disrespectful, arrogant, argumentative, and confrontational, and probably that's true sometimes. I've also been called supportive, reasonable, thoughtful, passionate, and good trouble. Clearly, I prefer the second set of adjectives, so I plan on working on those actions that provoke some to use the first set. However, I won't stop advocating for our students, our staff, and our community, and working with my fellow board members to provide the best education possible to the children in Montgomery County. That means sometimes I may not agree with others, and sometimes my approach might not be something that others find to be their style. I'll always listen to all sides of an issue and make a decision based on research, facts, science, and also the desires of our community, not just one small part of the community. I look forward to working with my colleagues on the board in 2021 to support our students as we try at some point to get back to a sense of normalcy once the pandemic subsides. I apologize if I have insulted anyone or if I have said things that people found to be unacceptable. That was never my intention. My intention is always to be supportive of our children and our staff and our community. Thank you."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Okay, we'll move on to the next agenda item. The athletic update that Mr. Knott gave, is there, does the board have any other further questions after hearing public address?
I actually had one question, but it's not really a sports question, but it's, I guess it's related to that. Somebody had mentioned other curricular activities, and I guess, what's happening with other things besides sports? I mean, because there are other activities that our students are involved in, and I actually, I'm not sure what's really going on at the schools with the other activities. Do you know?
Yeah, so from a VHSL standpoint, any of the activities like debate, forensic...
Like forensics and...
Yes, theater. We are moving forward with those in the same way we are moving forward with the athletic.
Okay.
There's guidelines for those as well. The one that does not fall under VHSL is our MAC competition teams. Mountain Academic Competition Conference is the name of that. That is a local group, us and farther southwest, that compete in a Scholastic Bowl format. And they, they do not fall under the VHSL jurisdiction. They will be able to compete, but it would be virtually. They're not going to, right now, meet in person, but it is a competition team, such as Scholastic Bowl, that can meet, can hold meets, but in a virtual setting.
Thanks.
Danny, I have a kind of a question about, you know, when this topic first came up back in December, there, you had mentioned that basically some, some sports have different rules for, for mitigation strategies. You mentioned earlier about, you know, maybe a different consideration for outdoor sports. So I think it is unfortunate that, you know, from a health and safety point of view, we don't necessarily treat all the sports exactly equally just because of the nature of the sports. So for example, I think swim and dive, I think for obvious reasons, would create a safety risk to, to have a mask on there. And I always look at that and say, well, the mitigation is that you're generally more than six feet apart from people, and certainly if, you know, you're swimming lanes or something, you're rarely within six feet of somebody for very long. It's a highly chlorinated environment, you know, so that one is maybe easier to accept. But what about some of, are there other sport? I know you mentioned wrestling, and that one I can also understand not, that having a mask could, you know, risk having your ear ripped off or something like that, right? But, but at the same time, you're, you know, here's a sport where you are in very close proximity, maskless with somebody. So what's, what's the mitigation for, for something like that? And is there an alternate mitigation?
So the, the sports that don't require masks are swim and dive, competition cheer, wrestling, and golly, there's one more, and I'm just forgetting it right off the top of my head, I apologize. For, for wrestling, for example, as soon as an athlete were to leave the mat, then they would go and clean themselves. They would go and sanitize themselves to try to remove as much of anything that they may have gotten on them out. Now, certainly, they can't do that with their lungs.
Sure, yeah.
And they're face to face and in a very close proximity. They are face to face in a match for less than 15 minutes. The VHSL, one of the mitigation strategies for wrestling is the first period is one minute, second period is two, third period is two. It used to be two, two, and two, so it was a six-minute match. So they have reduced the time to five minutes.
Okay.
So they wrestle for a minute, then there's a break, then they wrestle for two, and then a third period of two minutes.
Okay, and, and our local health department has reviewed that strategy?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The also, the other recommendation for wrestling is to have two mats, and you only wrestle on one mat, and you alternate mats. So while one match is going on, you're cleaning the other mat.
Okay.
So that you can just alternate back and forth.
Okay.
Let me say too, something that we're looking as we're moving forward. The way, something we didn't mention is, it helps remind you, the way that we're doing sports is now we're doing winter, sort of the normal season. Then it goes to fall sports in February, March, okay? And then at the end, it's your spring sports, yeah, for the last couple. And so one thing we're looking at now is for football. Some of you may have seen, if you watch football, they have the shields, they usually just come up here. But now they're selling shields for the entire, entire face mask. So we're looking at the possibility of purchasing those for our football players because they will be in close proximity to help with that. You know, something too that we didn't mention that I think is important. We watch, at least I do, I watch football, okay? And, and I love watching, I watch college football, I watch the NFL. And they're out there doing their thing, and they've got, you know, the regular, they're playing just like they always have played. But what folks don't realize is this, they're getting tested constantly. They're getting tested, the officials are getting tested. I know college basketball referees are getting, they get sent three tests a week, you know, to send in. So it's a little different, and college athletes, you know, they're all getting tested constantly. And so, and of course, we're not in a position to be able to do that. And they're still having outbreaks in counseling games. There are tons of basketball, college basketball games that were canceled this past weekend. But going back to, we're looking at, you know, for football, the mask. You know, volleyball is a little different, which is nice because they're on separate sides of the nets, and they're only with their own players. So that's, you know, that, that could possibly help across with wearing the mask. Yeah, and I've seen collegiate teams wearing masks in volleyball, actually. And then, you know, cross-country will be coming up as well. Of course, that's outdoors, and we'll, we'll discuss that a little more as we get to it. But I'm going to have this discussion on Thursday with our Region 6 superintendents, look and see what we can do. And, and of course, you know, as always, the prayer of the things are going to get better. You know, just, just, you know, just hope that they do, and we start seeing trends downward because I know it's important for these kids to, to compete. And so, but we're working on it. We do want some consistency across our region. It sort of helps all of us, you know, there's some, you know, I just heard that Renner County may be starting, you know, and it's volatile. Well, basically, they just got to play each other, I guess, because no one else is, you know, that's the thing no one else is playing. And so, but we'll, I'll be talking to those superintendents on Thursday as well, and we'll be having a discussion about, you know, what to do, how to do, how to look at things. And we'll continue to look at things and see, you know, try to find some positives to help make it work out for our, for our winter sports. So we'll see.
I just want to make sure that, you know, as Dana mentioned, and, and you came up with the backup plan for playing within our own schools. You know, I, I want to make sure every sport gets that opportunity, that there's time enough before their season ends that if they've not been able to play, they can at least play, we can, you know, do some games with, with the other high schools.
Yes, and, but...
Yes, ma'am, that's what we hope to...
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I want to make sure that we stay with that.
Absolutely.
So I think, Ms. Graham, since we are, we do have athletic update here, and we just heard from everybody, would it, would it be appropriate? I know usually if we want to, you know, respond to, not directly to any one person, but if we want to respond to the community, we usually bring it up under unfinished business at the end of the meeting. But I think it'd be appropriate, since we're talking about the athletic update again, to go ahead and do that here and now. So, you know, I appreciate everybody coming out, I appreciate everybody's passion about this topic. And I, you know, I think for anybody who's spent any time around the school board, I think a lot of, a lot of what was said, to me, almost sounded like, you know, preaching to the choir. I do believe that it's pretty hard to make an argument that Dr. Meyer or our staff or even us don't support athletics or don't understand how important a part of the life of a lot of our students being an athlete is. So I do, I do get that, and, and I hope that that message does get through. I think for me, you know, it comes down to about... I think for me, you know, it, it comes down to a balance, you know, and I think this idea of, you know, let them play as if we don't want them to play is a bit of a straw man argument. You know, that it's, it's, it's let them play versus don't let them die. And the them may not be our student athletes, it might be teachers, coaches, it might be parents, grandparents, other members of the community. So that, that's the balance, I think, that everybody's trying to strike. And I hate to sound like a broken record, but I do think that it's, it's warrant to say that, you know, we don't have guidance coming down from the state. The state doesn't come and say, this is the way you have to do it, right? And some of that, admittedly, you know, is, is just political. And so they, they pass the buck and they push it down the line, and then you've got, you know, a bunch of school boards making, you know, decisions on some of this stuff where, you know, arguably, maybe there's some of this stuff that should come from, from, from higher. But nonetheless, you know, I, I do want to address some of these, some of these things, but the, you know, on the whole idea of expert opinion and doctor opinion and that kind of a thing. I don't know how many health districts we have in the state, it's a lot, and the different health districts come to different conclusions, different experts at different universities come to different conclusions. And I don't mean that, I don't mean to say that in a way, to just say, therefore, we can just do whatever we want. You know, we have to look at all the data that we have available and make the best decision possible. And I think, you know, I do, I'm appreciative that, you know, that we have these, these districts, that multiple superintendents come together and try to get some consistency across the state. So, you know, to Dr. Meyer and, and Mr. Knott, I appreciate y'all's work on that. I, you know, for me personally, from what I've seen and from the science that I see, I think that we're still taking a risk. But I do think, you know, where we are, it's a, it's a calculated risk, and it is relatively low. And so I am, for now, okay with following the guidelines that we have, and I'm happy to see the guidelines are set to something that is more mechanical. So people know and can predict, you know, when they'll be able to play competitive games or not. And I think, you know, what you're talking about with NFL and college sports, I mean, they have so much more resources than we do, and they're still not getting it right. There's still a lot of infections happening, and so I, this very much is a, a balance that I'm worried about. And I'm certainly, I, I am not apt to basically shrug off the strong recommendations of the V H S L in this case, to, to kind of go off in a different direction. And, and lastly, I do think, you know, a lot of the arguments that were made about sports and teams and the importance for the kids, you know, I want to point out, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but what we are discussing here really is the difference between, it's not whether or not you can play sports or be on a team, it's whether or not you will have competitive games this week. So, you know, I, I think, I think we should keep that in perspective as well. I really appreciate what Kobe, I think it was Brian, said, which I think is, is maybe one of the most important things that was said tonight, as, as always, our kids come through, right? But he said, you know, that i- if you want everybody to play, then everyone in the community has to do their part to bring these numbers down. And so we need every, we want to, everybody to play, we want them to do it safely, so I hope that we can do that in the coming weeks.
That I'm not trying to undermine the safety issue of it all, but I hear these kids crying out for help, and I, and I understand where they're coming from. And I, I guess because of the parent in me, kind of, you know, I've had an athlete, I know, again, don't want to underestimate the safety of it. But I'm looking at the numbers, looking at the percentages of the low volume, I think we've proved ourselves in the schools and other things. I think that we could probably come to a, a compromise, to where if the, the people that we needed there feel safe in doing the games, that we could come to some kind of compromise to where the games could possibly be played. So, you know, if they have to give up something they really don't want to do, to do it for, for safety issues, or what other coaches, or attendees, or even spectators, or officials, or whatever, would, would want to feel safe doing a game, I don't see to where we couldn't get to a point to where there could be a compromise, like he was trying to say. You know, we need to be as strongly towards the other side and our feelings to how they feel as to how they want us to feel about how we feel. So I think the compromise issue would be a great place to possibly, for us to possibly maybe even further discuss or start. Not, not negating the risk, the risk assessment or the risk factors, but, you know, still taking into the effect of, Danny, I'm sorry, I don't know if I asked you, has the health department given us any guidance, our local health department given us any guidance on any of this that's been discussed this evening?
Because of our mitigation plan for being in school and for athletics, they would be okay with us playing.
Okay, I, I didn't know what, what their.
And interesting enough, I just got off the phone before I came in here with superintendent in Salem, the, their health department is the exact opposite. You know, they were, so they're totally against, got a couple of their divisions in that area have started to play now, and it was against the recommendation of their health department. So there's, it goes to inconsistencies from place to place.
Their health department in Salem and Roanoke, that area, the Allegheny, they're actually, she, she's actually recommending that they be in Phase Two.
She's recommending even go back, even more than what they are now, right?
For not only athletics, but for in-school too.
Yeah.
To drop back, so.
That's where the confusion comes.
Dana, what I'm, what I'm saying, since you addressed that to me, I, I just want to be clear, I think this is my position and perhaps the position of others on the board. I think for me to be where I am right now is already a compromise, you know, because.
And I was just saying, I was, I was basically agreeing with, with what you were saying, is, you know, each, each side seeing the other one as of equal, you know, importance to, to that, if I'm making sense. I don't know if I'm making.
Yeah.
I just want to, are you?
Yeah, please.
One thing, we, you know, every single person this evening talked about, let them play, except for one person, and that was the teacher. And I think sometimes we forget, and I understand, and I had two daughters who played sports, and they would not be happy with being able to compete either. And I, and I, and I get the angst of, of those individuals and of those families, it's, it stinks. It's like, how many of us are, and there's so many sacrifices we've had to make to have to make another one. But then I hear someone like that speak, and, and I think people forget that by allowing their children, they're saying, let my children play, you are now risking other people besides just your children. You're risking other people in the community, you're risking teachers, you're risking other students who then go home, who have elderly grandparents. There's, there's just so much involved, and I think we forget what it's like, and, and that teacher, who is, who is, still has students, because he's elementary school teacher. And he, you know, there's a lot of, it is difficult for teachers to, and staff to, to continue on, and, and I think we sometimes forget about that, and, you know, it's, I, I, I think it would be wonderful if everybody could play sports. I wish we could, I wish everything was back to normal again, but it's not, and it's unfortunate, and I just think it requires patience, and, and I feel bad for students. And the scholarship issue, I get that too, and that's got to be really tough, you know? We've, there's so many sacrifices people have made, but I, I surely don't want to sacrifice the health of, of other people in our community either. So it's, I, whoever said earlier, there's no win, it's not, there is no winning, there's no win-win.
Something we failed to mention earlier, I believe, when doing the presentation, is we talked about the mask being required by our athletes in practice in most, in most sports. That's not happening in the rest of the, in many of the rest of school divisions, they're not asking them to wear a mask.
They're not.
And so, of course, we got a little pushback on that for some folks, but we've shown it, it is, it is, it is safe. And that came up at my last superintendent's meeting, the question was, if we end up playing, we wear a mask, the other school doesn't. And so we actually came up with an agreement in our Region Six also, that if one school is required to wear a mask by their administration, then they are going to comply with our rule, and wear a mask when they play us also. So I thought that was really, that was really good of the Region superintendents to, to, to go along with that, with us.
And if I'm not mistaken, Dr. Meyer, when they come to us and play here, they would wear the mask, right?
No, when we go to them too, they wear a mask.
I apologize.
No, yes, both, whenever they, yeah, yeah.
I, I think this has been the challenge with this COVID, you know, as a society, we are so individualistic. You know, we always think, you know, our child, our, our, our household, our little unit, but this COVID made it so apparent that it doesn't end what we want to do. You know, it goes beyond that, it affects the neighbors, it affects the coaches, it affects the teachers. And that's why I think I really appreciate, I appreciate everyone coming, and definitely, we want them to play, and also, we want them to go back to school. I mean, it is, you know, as much as we want us, we want them to play sports, and I am, you know, nothing against the athletics, but I want them to play instruments, I want them to act. I want them to do all the other things that they supposed to do. And it's not fair, but it's not fair for anyone, it's not fair for us to be in this position to make these decisions. It's not fair for teachers, don't have choice to be remote, they have to be in school, as long as we want them to be able to teach in person. So, so even, even though I appreciate everybody's comments, I really, you know, it makes me come back to really the Kobe's comment. I think we have to think communal, we have to think as a community, so what we do, what we care, what we be careful and follow all the guidelines. Yeah, it's, it's not comfortable, it, you know, gives me headache, it makes me stuffy, I'm so warm, you know, I can't think after a while because my face is closed. But we, we have to do that, not just for ourselves, for, actually mostly for the others, so that the other individuals can do what they need to be doing. So I think it's a total different mindset that as a society we have to get used to, and I think I really appreciate Kobe's comment that, you know, yeah, we are asking, let's play, let's go to school, you know, let's teach. You know, we demand different things from, from each other and from ourselves, but are we really doing, you know, what we supposed to do for those things to, to be able to be done? I mean, if, you know, it has been more than a year, I haven't seen my kids, they live in three different states, I've been zooming since, you know, last year, and it was a tough holiday time. But, you know, they didn't want to take a chance, you know, and I didn't want to say, oh, let's get together, nothing will happen. Because even if just a little slight, 1% health percent, 0.1%, if it happens, you know, how we feel about it, we can't take any chance. Even though we think it is safe, it's definitely not safe, and nobody can say it is safe, because it, you know, I mean, we are just one, I'm just one of the seven, I already know five people died. You know, it's just a small community, you know, it's just one person, knowing that many people passed, you know, granted that they were not 15, 20 years olds, but, you know, they got it from 15, 20 years olds, you know, at least, you know, half of them. So it is, it is serious, and we have to take it serious, and it's not easy, and I, we, you know, ultimate goal is as safe as possible, yeah. We'll get them to play, we'll get them back to school, but I think we all have to help that to be able to happen. It's easier said than done.
So, again, I kind of feel like, I don't even know how to put it, like the, like the wicked witch or something, because I truly believe in, believe in athletics. At graduations, I watch students walk across the stage, who I know, if it had not been for athletics, helping them understand, you're going to have to make those grades to play. When I was in school way back then, the girls didn't even have a standard that we had to meet as far as our grades. I sat down with the coaches and other female athletes and made our own standards. This is what we have to meet to make sure we're all going to play. And if we had someone whose grades were slipping, then we did what we needed to do to help that person get those grades back up so they could participate. And one of the things this pandemic has brought to light across this whole country in many different areas is the disparities that we have. And when I sit here and I'm listening, and I, you know, I know it happens, because my son traveled, and I had to pick up the stuff where he normally would have been working and paying some of his own way. There's a big sacrifice there, and those numbers are unbelievable, and the way people travel all over the East Coast every weekend, it just blows my mind. And the students who cannot, and I know they depend on schools, to give them that athletic edge, to be able to win a scholarship. We need to start focusing on some of these issues, as to why do our students have to feel like they've got to be the best and compete for one or two little slots, when so many of them deserve to go to a second level education? So like our ACE program, you know, there should be free secondary education for anybody who wants it and is willing to work for it, and not have to feel like, I've got to, I've got to do good in the sports to be able to get that. I can't, my parents can't afford it, you know, it's a burden, this, this needs to stop. But I also know that's not the whole thing, kids just want to get out there and have fun and compete. And, because, you know, some kids aren't athletes, but they're on the team, and they have a great time, and they cheer on the folks who are out there really, you know, performing at higher levels. And this really just breaks my heart. But there's also this risk out here that I just can't, at this point, you know, ignore. But there are so many things that we need to do better, as far as making sure our children understand, you don't have to be the best with the ball or on the track to be able to achieve and go on to be whatever you want to be. And this is, this is your only avenue, there's something really wrong with that. And we heard that from a lot of our athletes tonight, and I'm sure a whole lot more who, you know, weren't here for us. And I really appreciate, I always appreciate the voices of our, our youth showing up and helping them understand, this is, this is what you have to do to bring about change and to make sure things happen. But this is a heartbreaker, it really is. You know, academically, getting kids back in school, yeah, we've got to figure that one out too, but I don't want to take that vaccine, I'll just tell you that right now, I don't. But when you sit here and you listen to this, and for months go on and on with how we do this, like Kobe said, okay, time to step out and do what we need to do. So I guess when it's my time, I'll get that vaccine, but this, this is just, this is just a horrible situation we're in, it really is.
Does anybody else have anything to say?
Okay, so I haven't said anything on the first session or this one. You know, when I ran for office 15 years ago, the sole purpose I ran for office was extracurricular activity, because I truly believe most young students want to be in school no matter what. But if you can have a student at the secondary level want to be in school, then they're going to learn something while they're there. If they don't want to be there, the best teacher in the world's going to struggle trying to teach them. So I have been an advocate for 15 years, and I still am, and, you know, I used to have family when my boys played, and they would fuss about going to the games, it'd be so cold, and I said, well, it's yours throwing that ball down the field. You want, you don't care how cold it is, you want to be there. So I understand, and I think, and yes, we did hear from some that may not be agreeant, but we heard, we heard from teachers and coaches and medical professions that do want to. And I think, for me, I think, I hope we can compete as soon as possible, because I, I think it's important. I think that there's so much at stake, not only COVID, but as we had a nurse talk to us about what it's doing to our students and their mental state, and I truly. And I truly hear that and I see it and I think that's dangerous. And, you know, our kids deserve that, that edge too. So as soon as we have that little bit of, of window for our kids to compete, I am all for it. I think they should as long as we follow the guidelines and they're being as safe. What's hard, and we heard it tonight, and I've got pictures because this is what I've been saying. When you watch all these teams, Phil Harkwright or Phil Blacksburg's field's full of students, full of parents, and those parents are in every walk of life of employment. And, you know, that is hard to take that your child can't play at a high school level when you're watching that. And when you're seeing all these travel teams and all these gyms full, it, it, it's hard. It's hard to understand why. And like I said, these are, these are parents from all different walks of employment that are having their students go and play competitively on the road. If I didn't sit with my own eyes, I would say, oh, yeah, I don't know. I saw it. I watched it. So I understand the baseball was outdoors and I haven't been to the basketball, but I know it's happening. I know it is. So I, I, I thank everybody that came out tonight. I appreciate it. I know it's hard, it's, it's passionate. And, and, and the great thing about our board is we all do have different opinions and that is great. Sue, you're so right. You know, it's, it's welcomed. We all can agree on everything and that's okay. So, you know, but for me, as soon as we can play, I hope they can.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to our next item. The administration presented the school board with a proposed revised pay plan, which would enact an average 3% pay increase for employees during the last six periods of the 2021 contract year. And I have Mr. Krantz here in case we have any questions. Do I have a motion to adopt the revised pay plan as presented?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And now any discussion?
So I'll start while they're doing that. So I brought up some concerns last time and I have gotten together with Mr. Krantz a couple of times to better understand, to better understand the numbers. And so I just wanted to share with the board what, what, where my concern was and, and what the conclusion is now. So, you know, my concern was basically that we had asked for additional revenue for our budget for FY '21. And a portion of that revenue was deferred, but it's also, it was also my understanding that the state pulled back the portion of, of revenue, additional revenue for a 3% raise. So my concern was that, you know, with the whole harmless, that we potentially could be putting ourselves in a position where we're, where we were using one-time money, and I kind of jokingly called it two-time money because we're supposed to, the expectation is we're going to get this money two years in a row for a recurring expense. And that's something that I didn't think was, was prudent. But I guess what I had missed at some point along the way is that the state still gave us a 2.6, is that right, Tommy? A 2.6 million dollar increase in SOQ funds. Now generally, as I understand it, that's, that's not necessarily to cover a raise. That's usually meant to cover, you know, other expenses, maybe, you know, increased cost of services or textbooks or other things. But be that as it may, that is money that keeps coming back to us on a recurring basis. So I do think, after looking at it again more closely with, with Tommy, that we do have that money. I will add that, you know, it does make me a little bit, it does make me a little bit nervous that, that we're using a lot of that money that's coming to us there for a raise. However, I talked with Sue this past week and I think she convinced me, and she made a good point about this, well, it shouldn't say convinced me, she, she helped allay my fears, I should say, that, that given everything that we've gone through this year and the importance of having the raise as a raise for most of our teachers and staff, that, that really this is something that's critical, that it's worth, I think, using the money on this rather than anything else. And plus, the board had already passed this budget anyway. So I, I don't think it's smart to go back and, and argue it. But anyway, I just wanted to let you guys know what, the conclusion I had come to. So I will be supporting this, this pay plan tonight.
Anybody else have any questions?
Well, you know, as I've said before, the fact that this didn't happen for the whole school year is really disturbing to me. As hard as folks have had to work, the sacrifices that they're making. And it was in our budget and then it got pulled back. And it's like, maybe we can, maybe we can't, and now you get half of it. So I, I think we've got to figure out how to do things better than this. And, and this goes back to my comments before about education and what we do for our students and, and that is we compensate our employees so that we can make sure we're doing the best we can do for our students.
Anyone else? Ms. Drake, would you mind doing a roll call, roll call, please?
Sure.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Tribaka?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Cass?
Yes.
Ms. Karan?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Krantz.
All right. We have the policy 1-6.8, citizen participation. This is the first reading of the policy and currently no action is expected. Does anyone have any questions?
Okay, so I've always be a proponent of making sure that we can create opportunities for our public to address us in person or as close as we can get to that. I start questioning when we were doing our Zoom meetings, why couldn't we have some type of participation? And it was because we could only do this, this and this. And then as soon as we came back, I also said, we're putting, almost 10,000 students doing virtual and all kinds of amazing things with technology. Why can't we do something so that public would be able to address us? And I think this is something that is needed. We have so many more people paying attention to what's going on with this school system. That it's amazing, it's scary, it's aggravating, but it's necessary. And for folks who don't want to come into this building or don't feel comfortable or don't have the means to be in this building to address this board, this is a way for them, for them to do it. For us to see their faces, for us to see their emotions when they're speaking to us about issues that are concerning them in public education, I believe is something we as a board should do. Yeah, there's concern, people get behind devices and they get brave. They get abrasive, you know? This is me speaking for me. I don't care, you know? Say what you're going to say, do what you're going to do. I signed up for it. So to not change our policy or adjust our policy so that we can have virtual in virtual attendance for folks who want to address this board, I think would be, would be sending a message that we want to keep you all at a certain distance. Or we only want to hear so much. And just because you can call us, email us, text us, whatever, that does not mean that we should stop and say, nah, that's enough. You've got enough, you've got, all these ways you can communicate with board members. But, yeah, we don't need to see you if you're not standing right in front of us. That's just wrong.
Yeah, I agree with what, what you said, Penny. And I would also add that it's, you know, I think from an equity, I'll, I'll just stress the, the equity piece from, you know, people who, you know, who may live with somebody right now, especially during the pandemic, people who live with somebody who's immunocompromised, if they are immunocompromised, I mean, that, it is a risk to come, to come here. And I don't think that's something we should force people to do if they want to speak to us. So, I mean, I've been beating this drum all fall and so for me certainly, you know, I know that we were, we were given two different policies and, and forgive me, I, I, I have looked at them both. I don't, I, I think the second one, we were told there was two of them. I think the difference is that the second one allows electronic participation in, at any meeting, whether our meeting is virtual or not. Is that correct? So that, that's the one that I would, that I would support. And I just don't, I guess I don't see the argument for not doing that.
So I just have a question. When somebody is doing public address online and they refuse to stop at their three minutes, how do we handle that?
Turn them off, yeah.
Turn them off.
We can turn them off.
I mean, is that, okay, so they get irate and angry and then administration has to take the heat for that. And that becomes a problem. What's going to happen then?
We've had people stand at that podium and do the same thing.
Right, but it's a little easier to control that, I think, in person than online.
No, it's easier online because you just cut them off.
Yeah, you just shut them down. Yeah, I, I mean, actually here, it probably, I would think it'd be hard if somebody doesn't want to leave. I think, I guess that's why we have police officers here.
I say we have a sheriff here.
I haven't seen anybody dragged out yet, but I.
But I'm just, I'm just asking because.
But I think we, I, I'm pretty sure we could just shut them down. That's not, not to say that they wouldn't call and complain about it later.
Right. And, and I agree, when you sign on, it, it, you, you kind of have to grow a second skin, but it, it can get harsher than you think. It's been there. So, you know, it becomes sometimes a personal attack more than about what's happening on the board. So I just think if we do this, people need to understand that that's, that's an option.
Isn't that, Marty, isn't that policy, isn't that a policy anyway? The policy is that you can't,
Thought so.
You can't say things during public address that are not related to, I forgot what the exact policy is.
Right, let me, let me grab that, Sue, real quick. Hold on.
But that you can only talk about things that are related to school board. So if somebody is online and they start talking about something else, you just shut them down.
Um, hold on one second.
Make it clear.
I think there's even wording that if somebody decides to be abusive or anything like that, I think the chair has.
All that we can really control is that, and Gideon probably has this memorized, is that we cannot speak about employees or, I know it's here.
Individual employees.
Individual employees or, or people. Yeah, I don't see it here, but that's usually what we say. So if somebody was getting nasty, I don't think until their three minutes are up, we can't cut them off.
If they were, well, if somebody was, came here and started cursing at us and using really, you know, foul language, what will we do? Just let them continue? I just, I mean, I, I've never seen.
That's what that gavels for.
Yeah.
I don't know what the answer to that is.
That's what that gavels for.
You can call them out of order. Yeah.
Yeah, you can call them out of order. I guess we could do the same on Zoom.
Yeah, you're, you do the same thing and if they can, if they were here and they can, I guess, I would treat them the same way we treat somebody here. And if they continue, then.
We, we talked about it with Mr. King too, Dr. Meyer, you know. And I think, you know, if they will come and tell me that like, you know, Ms. Karan, you are such a bad board member, I cannot shut them down with that. That comes with the First Amendment unless it is really profanity, then I can call them out of order.
Or a threat to your life.
You know, in a fine line, they can, they can be nasty and personal to us because we're elected officials. We really cannot say anything.
In person too.
Yeah.
Oh, in the hat.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's.
Not without naming names, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, not. Trust me, it can get worse. A lot worse than what we've heard.
Did anyone else have any other comments they wanted to make? Again, this is just the first reading.
What, what are we going to vote on then next time? Because we've kind of been given two options. Are we going to vote on both of them?
Well, now you got to choose one. You can do, you got three options, not to keep the way it is.
Yeah.
Choose one, which is, you know, from here on out, do the, do the virtual. Or the next one is just virtual if you all are virtual. And in the middle, if you want to consider, it would be a virtual while we're in this environment. That's something we didn't put together. You know, I think, it sort of made me think of that when you were talking, Mark, that there are folks that can't come in right now because of the environment. And that would be a, a middle ground between, so you got four options, I think. You could do nothing, choose virtual from here on out. You could choose virtual while we're in the pandemic.
Oh, I see.
Right. Or we could choose virtual.
When we're virtual.
So, so that's, I guess that's the crux of my question. Do we need to come up with a consensus on what we want or are we going to have to vote on that?
It'd be nice for us to have an idea what, what you all want to vote on next meeting. It's up to you guys.
So for me, and I don't know if you all caught this, I don't believe it should be limited to just this pandemic or folks who feel compromised. Because as we have said many times, there are folks who don't feel comfortable coming and standing here or they don't have the transportation or babysitters or whatever, but they still want us to hear from them. So this should be open forever as far as I'm concerned.
I agree, I agree with Penny on this one. I think this is one of those like, you know, silver linings that comes out of this terrible situation, you know, that, and, and if it's a problem, you know, we can reassess and we can always change our policy in the future. That, that's where I stand.
I, I'll, I'll go ahead and just say that's where I stand also. I think that we should give that opportunity and, and see what happens if, if it does not work. I, I think that once the pandemic subsides, I mean, really, we haven't had that many people come to, only the last couple of meetings, we've had a couple of issues that people were very, you know, had a lot of concerns about. So I think we've had more than the usual. But in the last year since I've been on the board, we, those are the only two meetings that we've really had more, maybe two people.
Yeah, you're right. I mean, not, not every time we have, obviously.
And I don't think people are just going to jump at, gee, now I can do it online, so I'm going to, I'm going to put myself out there. You're still putting your face online and you're still being recorded. So I, I don't think there'll be like a big rush of people to make public comment. And we still have the limit of 30 minutes. So, and we can still hold to that, right? Anyway, that's, I, that's where I stand. But I'm, I'm, I don't feel like super strong about either, so I'm, I'm open.
I think I'm thinking some logistical, I guess, questions that in my mind. I, I mean, granted that I'm not technology, technologically savvy. You know, most of the time when we say this virtual public address, that means at the time that we dedicate the public address hours, you know, starts relatively at 8:30 and then we give the 30 minutes initially, then we, we extend and then we have to have that 30 minutes for in-person people that are here plus whoever wants to talk to us, you know, virtually. So the timeframe that we have right now, it has to have both virtual people and in-person people. That's one question. And then the other thing is when we say virtual, they're going to be at eight o'clock in front of their computer, ready to get into Zoom so they can say something to us. Or it's going to be kind of a pre-recorded thing. They have this question and video clip that they send us. Because there are different ways, you know, being done. different ways, you know, being done differently. So I just tried to logistically how this is, it might choose some time, you know, so I don't know how we're going to handle in the real time, I guess. I mean, it sounds good, but how we're going to handle in the real time?
I think the technology can be solved, right? It's already been solved, but there's Zoom waiting rooms and things like that that we can use to queue people up. I am not in favor of the recorded option.
Why?
Well, first of all, somebody can record a video of themselves and just send it to me via email. I don't think, you know, but I, I do think, you know, I think there's something about, you know, the whole, the whole thing being live. I think that's what this is, for people to talk to us live, and so, you know, I'm, I'm willing to take that step. I'm not sure I'm willing to go the next step to, to pre-recorded.
Okay, so.
Okay, but, oh, I'm sorry. I can't see back here.
So, to put some guidelines to help, to say that folks have to sign up at least 24 hours in advance with, for a Zoom or whatever we want to use, I think that would be fair, and we could switch back and forth with people. You know, if people signed up two weeks before, of course, they would be able to speak first in those first 30 minutes, but I think, quite frankly, we're trying to make this a lot more complicated than it need be, because people sign up, they get to speak. We have a policy that says within this period of time, this many people speak, and then we vote to do it a different way. They just not, might not be sitting in the room with us.
Okay, Mark, just a comment to that, though. What is the difference about not feeling like you want to watch a recorded video when maybe it's someone who has to work the night of the meeting and can't be there live? If we're going to say, well, fair is fair, and they should have the opportunity, then you're contradicting because those people should have that opportunity as well.
I mean, perhaps. I'm, I'm open to that. I mean, I'm talking.
And if you're gonna, if you take one, you got to take it all. You can't just say no.
I don't know that, I don't know that that's true. I don't know that that's true. I think that there's another problem with, you know, if you go to the recorded route, too, I think that there's a possibility with technology today that then it becomes an arms race on who can make the flashiest video or something like that, and that's not really what public address is about, right?
I agree, 100%.
So, so I guess that's why I'm saying, you know, I, I'm fine with, you know, I'm fine with somebody speaking to us live from a different location. And as to your concern, Ms. Crown, I am also, I feel strongly that we should be doing this as soon as possible during this pandemic and during this time. As far as do we keep it? Yes, I think that we do. Now, do we have to pass that policy to keep it forever and always? I can bend on that. We can, you know, we're probably unfortunately going to be in this at least for the rest of this school year, if not part of next school year, heaven forbid, but, you know, so I think we'll have a chance to see how it's working, and we can always make adjustments or keep it permanently if it's working well.
Does anyone else have any more comments? I, I would personally, I personally feel that if, if we want to put a policy in place for when and if we have to do the Zoom sessions again, I would be okay with that, but otherwise, I feel like there are multiple opportunities and avenues for people to contact us currently. So I, I would, I would only change the, the allows virtual public comment during virtual school board meetings.
I'm, I'm going to throw a real wrench into all this. Well, I'm just curious, though. How long have we been doing this for public? I mean, I'm going to guess we started allowing, having a public forum before internet, before people had emails and cell phones and all the technology of the world today, and so that's why the concept exists, to allow people to come and talk, because otherwise, how else would they get heard other than if they sent you a snail mail letter in the US mail? So, I'm, like, I'm just outside the box here. Do we need public forum when people can write and send us things whenever they want? They can send us a video, they can send us an email, they can send us, I mean, they can say whatever they want, whenever they want, they can send it on Facebook, and we get all kinds of input from people all the time. As a matter of fact, I mean, this last week has been a really good example of, of that. So, and I'm not saying that I don't want people to come here, but it's, we spent, what, an hour almost today, listening to, to things that, and several people read what they sent to us already. So, just food for thought. Is public forum a kind of an old-fashioned concept that's seen its day?
So, because we are.
I dare say that.
And part of what we heard tonight was about our children need that interaction. We as human beings, I don't need as much as others, but we need that interaction, right?
Yeah, I hear.
We need to be seen and be heard. I pay a lot of attention to people's body language to help me understand exactly what they're saying and what they're not saying, but I think it's an important piece of elected bodies to be able to see face to face with the folks who put us here and depend on us to do the right things. So, I mean, we're, we're so disconnected as it is, I would hate to see this piece ever go away.
I'm just throwing it out there.
Okay, I believe we need to come up with a direction here for our staff. So I would like to take a straw poll vote, just between two items, whether you want to see a change or whether you don't want to see a change, and we can go from the majority from there.
I don't know that that's a good assessment, because I can see a change in the Zoom meeting, but I don't want to see a change in a regular meeting.
All right. Ms. Drake, do you have another suggestion?
I'll attend to consensus.
I just want to, I'd like to narrow it down for us to be able to then give you the next step of guidance.
I think Dr. Meyer laid out the options fairly well. Leave the policy as it is.
Okay.
Adopt the version of the policy that allows, I keep looking at them because there's the last one that I'm not going to remember. Adopt the policy that allows virtual when you are virtual.
Okay.
Adopt the policy that allows virtual at any time, and adopt the, a policy that you haven't seen yet. We would give you a new version that allows for virtual public address when there is a, an emergency order from the governor. And I, I would argue that, that that language could be different. We haven't talked about it, obviously, but that any time the county is in an emerg, a state of emergency period would be my recommended language there, so that it's not reliant on a statewide crisis. It actually could be a local crisis where we locally, we're in a state of emergency, but I'm talking too much. I think those are your four, your four things. Does that sound right, Dr. Meyer?
Yeah, it sounds exactly right.
Okay.
I don't, I don't understand the state of emergency thing, that we would, we're in a state of emergency, and we're going to take time, as much as I want to hear people's comments, to have public address. We need to be taking care of business.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know if state of emergency is the right language. We'll have to look and see, but.
What we're in right now.
Yeah, it's, so however we define the pandemic, you know, like right now, I just thought off the top of my head is something different, because of what Mark had said about having, knowing someone who would not feel comfortable coming into this environment during this time because of the pandemic, you know. So that's, so you, you got four choices there.
But I do, I think for direction, Jamie had it right. I think it, you know, that, are we interested in, you know, in only the virtual, you know, only having virtual public when we have a virtual meeting, or are we interested in having virtual public at any meeting? I think, or leave it the same. To me, those are the three main ones. And then if there's four of us or more who want to have virtual all the time, then we can talk as a board, if we want to only do that during the pandemic or whatever, or if we want to do that, you know, always.
Okay, so my, my choice would be that we have virtual public address at every meeting. That option would be there.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Okay, and Sue, are you still on the fence a little bit? Do you want to hear?
Yeah, you know.
Everybody else's?
I, I guess if I had to pick one, I'd pick virtual all the time, but I'm, I don't, I'm not like, I don't feel super strong about that, but.
Okay, so half and half.
If you're forcing me to pick one, that would be the one I pick.
Okay, how many do we have that feel like we only need to do virtual when we, when we're virtual?
Okay, well, Gune, guess what?
We didn't finish asking everyone how they felt about virtual all the time.
Well, virtual all the time is a three of us.
Well, I thought we were giving everybody an option to say what they wanted.
Yeah.
Right, that, that's what I was giving everybody, the option to do what they wanted, and Sue said yes, but she couldn't move.
But then you didn't ask anybody else.
I did. I just said.
They said, they, they said virtual.
Because the only other option.
Change the question. You didn't ask the same question of everyone and then go to the other question.
Jamie.
Yes, I prefer the, also, just because I feel like it would be an opportunity for us to try it, see how it works before we go 100% into it, that, you know, we can work out the, and, and give Brenda an opportunity to work with it and see how it's going to work, and work out the glitches and, and figure out how to do it, instead of, okay, we're opening it up, and here we go. We've not done it, we've not tried it, we don't have any idea. We shy away from things and other things to go wholeheartedly, so I think this is something else we should kind of take slowly. Try it at a, a remote meeting that we have, even if we want to schedule one, to give it a try, let everybody work the bugs out, let everybody work, see how it's going to go, see how we like it, and reexamine it. That's my thought. So I, I vote for just doing public addressed Zoom on Zoom meetings.
Okay, Ms., Ms. Parton?
I feel the same way as Jamie, and she did bring up a good point that I hadn't thought about, due to the fact that when we, when we actually went virtual, because we had to because of the pandemic and the issues, major issues that we had with that, I do think that we should learn a lesson from that, and that we should err to the side of caution and try it out, not to say that we can't go back and revisit it, but we should, if we are thinking about that, we should start out slowly.
Okay, Ms. Crown?
I think the way that Jamie put it, it made sense to, you know, have a, have a little trial period in this virtual. I still cannot picture how it's going to work, but, but, but my, my dilemma is, we're not in virtual, we're, we're coming in person. So if we're going to say virtual when we're virtual, how are we going to try this out? So that's the part I'm confused.
Yeah, that's what I, I was thinking through, because I, when I was thinking virtual during virtual, I was actually thinking virtual during, like, the work session. Do we do public forum during work session?
We do.
Yes.
We do.
Yeah, we do.
So what if we just did it during that meeting? What if we had the virtual only during work session meetings? Try it out, see how it goes, and then we have, so that way, people who want to come in person can come in person when we have meetings in here, and then people who want to do it virtual, they could do it while we're doing our work session meetings.
I mean, counter, counterpoint to that is that often we're, on our work sessions, we don't really vote. Now, if you ask me, that's probably the right time to address us anyway, but usually people come and address us the night that we're voting, and so.
I think I'd like to ask a question to Mr. Wickham and Ms. Drake. What amount of work are we talking about to do this, either just as a test or for our work sessions?
I think if we go back to the meeting in December, that was why we were trying to, to really pinpoint what the board was looking for. You know, Ms. Cass at that meeting brought up really a different method that we hadn't considered, right? So in our conversations, we were looking at a very controlled environment, right, and, and everything that would go into that. You know, Ms. Cass mentioned something a little bit different, which is, you know, really having it be more like a classroom, right, where they would come in and, and the chair would call on people, just like they do in here. So there would be less control. I, I think what I would envision, again, Dr. Meyer and I haven't talked about it, so I do feel like I'm talking out of turn, is that at, at the point that you approve a policy, our job is to enact that policy, we would then come back to you with a, a potential timeline for implementation. There's a signup component that we have to consider. You know, just tonight, for example, you know, Ms. Graham, we had to have two different lists, right, because there were people who were calling, people who were emailing, people who were sending Facebook messages to sign up, and then the people who used the online form, and making sure that everyone was in the right order, because it is, your policy says, it is based on the, on when they sign up. So looking at voicemail tags and when the person left the message.
Right.
So those types of things, those are the things we'd, we'd have to work out, and, and also communicating with the public about what that would be. So we'd want to have that in a nice package for you all, based on whatever, however you decided to move forward.
And that's a lot of management on a, on a normal meeting basis, it sounds like, from what you're describing. So I think we have to factor that in to what we're doing. So am I the last one to say?
So, I don't understand why we are allowing folks to use Facebook, email, phone calls, all these different ways to say, I want to do public address. We say, you either call Ms. Drake, or you send an email. We're not going to be checking Facebook, and we're not going to be checking this. This is how you sign up for public address. I think that needs to stop now, if we're having to go through all that.
So Ms. Crown, you're, you seem to have some concerns about the implementation of the policy, right?
Yeah.
Which, and it sounds like Ms. Drake said that if we choose the policy we want, that the implementation details can, and timeline can be figured out later, and this actually made me think, too, about what you said, Ms. Parton, that, because you also seem to say, well, let's try it, you know, and I think, and I'm fine with, very fine with, with easing into something and trying it and, and whatnot, but I think the, the real question is what would you like to see at the end of the day, right? And, and I think for me, that's the, that's how I answered the question, you know? That's not, means I need to see that next meeting.
Right.
So.
May I speak? Going back to that sort of in-between, of course, unless we go to virtual, we will never see what it looks like, right?
Yeah.
With the first option. Maybe the opportunity, and I'm not pushing either one, but maybe the opportunity is that in-between. Put it in, write it in for while we're in the pandemic. When we get out of the pandemic, we can evaluate how it's worked during the pandemic, and all those unknowns, you know, is it working? Is it not working? Is it worth the time that our staff spends on doing it? And, you know, then at the end of the pandemic, we can, we can either say, okay, this was good for the pandemic, but I think we're okay to move on without it, or we can say, this has been, this has been good, let's, let's move on with it. So it's, it's sort of until the pandemic, and then reevaluate it then as to how it's working.
I'd, I'd be okay with that. I mean, I think that's a good compromise.
So one of the things that, you know, this is, we don't have to reinvent the wheel to say, how do we do it? How we, the town of Christiansburg has been doing it. Other folks do it, so it's not like we have to figure it out from the ground, as to how this works, what's the best practices, what has not worked. We just need to ask some people.
We reached out to them. They're not doing it anymore. They did it while they were virtual, and then they had a couple of a meeting overlap while they were back in person, and, and they don't any longer.
Board of supervisors are probably not doing either. I talked to.
They're not. We reached out to the attorney. They said that the changes that they're being asked for are for the virtual, which was how that idea came up. That was the version they sent to us, and we were like, no, 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 that's not what the board asked for, right? But that's what, that's what the, the boards are doing across the state.
So who would be willing with that compromise to put it in place for any of our meetings through the pandemic, and then evaluate it when we become, when we're open? And we, and we'll, we'll do the best we can to work it out. We'll have glitches. You know, I know other folks have done it, but we haven't, and we're a larger organization than a lot of these other folks, too, and so. but we haven't. Um, and we're a larger organization than a lot of these other folks too. And so, um.
And we have Doug.
Do we have a consensus?
And we have the best to work on.
Consensus for that direction? Does that sound good to everybody?
I think Mr. Chabak.
Yeah, I'm, I'm great, I'm great with that.
I'm okay with that.
You sound like you were very flexible, Sue. Dana? I mean, it's possible we can start out just doing our work sessions to get.
I, I think that's part of the implementation detail of rolling it out. We'll leave that to the staff.
We'd do the best we can. We need to look at it.
Sure.
Cause we're doing, you got to remember too, it's different operations. Uh, we, we're doing regular meetings here and will we start to do our, our work sessions at the PD Center? So there's different types of technology that we have to work with. And I know that because I've asked Doug that, that question a million times, and he always tells me, no, that's different, but you have to do, you have to work it out different ways at different places because of what's available. And so, um, so we'll work on that. And we, we can give you the information by the next meeting as to what that looks like and what we can do. And we, we might start with, all right, Doug may be able to tell us right now, which is, which is the best space to, to do that here? So maybe we do that here, you know, and see how it works out. Um.
Dana, are you good? I mean, Dana, so I'm looking at Dana, Jamie, are you good with that?
Um, y'all can be.
Okay. Dana?
Yes.
Okay, and you guys already said you were good with it, right Penny? You said you were good with it?
No, I didn't.
I'm sorry.
But.
I thought I heard you say that.
Going, so that's what we're doing, right?
Okay, so that's the way we're headed? All right.
We'll get, um, we'll send it to attorneys to, to make that tweak and, and go, go to, to actually figure out what the correct language is. Okay, all right.
During the pandemic, okay. All right, so, um, let's see. So that moves us to unfinished business. Does anyone have any unfinished business?
Yeah, I have several things. So one, I would like the board to set dates to continue our implicit bias development. Because I, what we went through this last fall left me in a very, very, very bad place. And I don't think it gave us the, the insight and the understanding as a board that we need to have. The second issue is, um, I'd like to know the numbers for our subs. What are we looking like?
What, what are you, what are you asking, our number of subs that we're, we have?
Yeah, the coverage. What are we looking like?
Okay, we can, what we can do is, um, I sent you all, um, I think a couple of weeks ago, after that fir- after we changed and pulled back seven through 12, um, we had started a, um, a no field list. And we went from, what, um, where's Danny? There you are. We went from what to what in one week? Yeah, I think we went from about 60 unfilled positions to 10 because of the moves we made. And we're still keeping that information. And so I'll make sure I include that in, um, next week's Tuesday Telegram to you guys to show you that chart as to how we're still doing.
So that, does that show every position in the district?
It, it shows how many classrooms are not being filled with a sub. That's the most important thing. How many are not?
Well, if we don't have drivers, we can't get them in the classrooms.
What, what's that?
Don't have drivers, we can't get them in the classroom.
We, we have not yet hit a critical mass with drivers. We've been working with Dr., uh, Mr. Krantz and Eddie in transportation, and we have not yet hit a critical number with drivers yet. We've been close a couple of times, but we haven't gotten there. Um, but I will include that, um, in, in, in the update.
Okay, and our custodians and cafeteria workers, aides, I mean,
We'll give you.
I'd like to see what we look like.
Yeah, we'll give you all that information.
Okay.
Yep.
Those vacancies are part of what Mr. Garrison sent today, all right? The, the, those are the numbers for January 5th, yeah.
Well, not all of us have had a chance to look at the information sent today. I also have a question about our transportation. So I had a, a driver tell me that with the sixth grade, she would have three people, three students on her bus. I know, how, how efficient is that? If we're looking at numbers like that?
It's not very efficient at all. The, the challenge though is trying to continue to change routes, communicating that to parents, you know, with the number of buses we have. We're averaging right now, on a typical day, about 10 drivers out.
About?
About 10.
10 drivers out?
Out. So, you know, and every time we change a route, change a driver, you know, bring a sub, whatever, it does cause an efficiency issue. So it's not very efficient when we only have three students. And if this was a normal year, you would see us consolidating that route. But because of the uncertainties that we keep seeing on routes, and even day to day, we haven't really touched it because, um, we just feel like that might cause us even more problems than, than it does being inefficient.
What grade was that, Ms., Franklin?
Sixth grade.
Sixth grade, so yeah. So what happened too was when we pulled back seven through 12, that's that bus. And so it.
Yeah.
And so, yeah. And so elementary's fine, but then when you start messing with secondary, it messes with elementary and all the times and, and that kind of thing, but we know they're reduced numbers.
You see all those routes are interconnected. And so, you know, just because it's six, seven, 12, we change that a little bit, it changes, you know, where the bus goes and the time. So that's, that's our challenge.
Okay, um, so Mr., I think it was Holloman, he sent us an email, you know, a couple of months ago, talking about the situation, having to be in the basement and hearing his baby cry. And there's so many other teachers and employees who are in those same types of situation. Uh, and I have been saying this for several months, that I don't believe that it is fair and that we are not being transparent enough. And I know there's some legalities that come in there. But when we have parents or family members who have tested positive, send their kids to school, and then teachers are not being made aware that the child has been exposed, which puts them at risk and their families at risk, um, and the rest of the community. Because if you don't know that there might be a situation, so then the children or child test positive too. But they're being sent to school and our employees are not being notified. What's, what is actually going on? That's wrong. And that is happening.
Anything you want to speak to, Mr. Garrison, in regards to that?
I would just say that any situation that we've been made aware of where someone has tested positive, they are excluded from school. And we have had situations where we've had to reach out and contact some parents and say, hey, under the circumstances we're aware of, you need to come and pick up your child. And again, in, in regards to notifications, uh, if we are aware of a positive case uh, with potential exposure at the school, we make that notification as the board is directed.
And that notification is, you can't save it so much, which means we are putting our employees at a high risk of exposure and they don't even know it unless in community, okay, wow, that's what just happened and I was just in contact with this student. And now, where am I at? I mean, it, this is not fair to not have people understand what is going on. Even with the quarantines, I've said this repeatedly, people need to know what the situation is so that they can, um, react the way they need to, to protect themselves. So when I'm hearing teachers say they're putting these situations where parents are sending kids to school, they end up testing positive, and then the child ends up testing positive. That is direct contact and our employees don't even really know what's going on. Because as much as we might want to say, we let folks know, that is not what I'm hearing.
Is there any contact tracing going on?
Yes, ma'am.
Who's doing the contact tracing?
Health department.
The health department?
Yes, ma'am.
But we, we don't do any within the school. It's the health, we, we rely on the health department to do it.
We absolutely rely on the health department to do it. We, we will, um, I'll speak for myself. If there are situations where I see situations that are concerning to me or, or possible connections um, in my communication to the health department, I, I put those forward. Like, like I will say, this is a certain number with these connections at a school. Or this is this certain situation where, you know, some cases I'm aware of that, that may appear to me to possibly have some overlap, I put that forward to the health department kind of as a heads up, but it's their contact tracers, yes, ma'am.
But how do we know they're actually doing it? Cause I, I'm just, I've heard, and again, I've, I've heard from other people, so I, I haven't, this isn't my own firsthand knowledge, but where people know that their, their, is contact tracing has not been done because they know that people tested positive and they were around them and nobody called. And so therefore, contact tracing wasn't done. And I, that my understanding is because there is so many cases that they just aren't able to keep up.
I, I think it's very difficult with a high number of cases.
Right, so I, I.
But, but I guess for me, I can also say, we've, we've been contacted by the health department to say, hey, we need contact information for XYZ person. Because they need to be, they need to be quarantined. So I have experienced the opposite side of that, I guess, where the health department is reaching out and saying, can you get me in contact with these students? Can you get me in contact with this, this staff member?
That recently, or is that in the past?
Pretty consistent.
I can speak to recent and, um, from personal experience, they are doing the contact tracing.
I mean, it, there, it's possible they just can't keep up with the pace. I mean, that's quite possible. But, like I said, that's, I don't, I have not had firsthand.
I've had conversations with folks who have had to deal with this firsthand. And it is not working the way it's supposed to be working. And our folks are being exposed. And they're not being notified what's going on. Even if it is the parents being tested and the child is in school and then everybody ends up positive, and then nobody has bothered to let folks know what's going, what has happened. It's not happening.
I think it goes back to that whole presumed positive thing too, you know? They're not doing contact tracing on presumed positives because, so it's, I think, leaves where some people get confused whether it's truly a positive or presumed, but.
And we're talking about truly positive.
And, and you're also talking, if I understand you correctly, Ms. Franklin, you're, you're talking about, um, not necessarily students who have tested positive, but students who have been exposed to maybe like, say, a parent who tests positive, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and I've heard, I've had, I've had lots of stories like that come back to me. So I, I think, you know, I, I, I do, you know, I, I, my conclusion on that is that it's, you know, from what I can gather, the health department's doing their best, we're doing our best. It's not a perfect system. And so things probably, those types of things will slip through the cracks. But that's also part of the, you know, that's part of the risk, right? And when we talk about risk, when we talk about community transmission getting higher, and, you know, that's why I keep pushing, you know, for lowering the level and things like that. I'm not just doing it because I don't want kids in school or whatever. It's, it's because, you know, the, the, this system doesn't necessarily work perfectly. And, and, you know, I think last, was it last month? I can't remember if it was December or towards the end of November, we did have a discussion about that around the whole presumed positive and things. And at that time, I don't think we had, uh, consensus on the board to change how we do that. Um, but, you know, I am still in favor of, you know, of doing more on reporting and, and I don't know exactly what that looks like, but I think until, you know, we get one or two other board members to agree to that, I don't know that that is really going to happen or can happen, so.
I mean, as, as long as we keep students in school, we, people will be at risk. And that's, that's just the way it is. As long as students are in school, students are at risk and teachers especially. And, and, you know, teachers, I think, I mean, most people know what happened to Amy Stevens and, and she, and she was a BHS teacher until just this May, um, when her family moved to North Carolina and she was just recently in ICU on a ventilator, and the woman's only, I think, in her early 40s. And so a lot of teachers, she's very close with a lot of teachers within this community. She taught here for 17 years. And, um, you know, teachers sit back and see that and think, whoa, there's somebody who is young and vibrant. I mean, she was extremely active within the, the, the community at BHS and within Blacksburg. And, and they see that and that's frightening, you know? And, and I know, like several people said tonight, you know, can't give into fear, and I, and I understand that, but, um, you can't help but, you know, be concerned. And so as long as we're asking teachers to be in front of students, it's, you're going to have people like Mr. Holloman who are concerned. And there's just, there's nothing, so as long as we make, we continue to have children in the schools, that's the risk we're allowing to happen. And I hope we have no Amy Stevens, uh, here in Blacksburg because that's, she's in, she's very, very sick and, uh, yeah, she's still not out of the woods.
Okay, um, as far as, um, the questions on subs and all of that, we can, um, ask for that to be included in the Tuesday Telegram?
Yes, we'll, we'll put all the information Tuesday Telegram. What we could do also, next, the next, uh, meeting is a work session. And so, um, we can actually just get Jason to just go back over some things again and, and look into the contact tracing and how well it's being done and, you know, where it's not being done and, and see if we can dig into it a little bit more and, um, and give, give a more in-depth update at, uh, the meeting on the 19th, right? And so we just, we'll get that on the agenda if that's okay.
All right. Does anybody have any new business?
So the implicit bias development?
What's that?
The implicit bias development?
Yeah, um, if you look at how, if you, you know, you all approved the calendar tonight, um, and.
Are we, are we? To be under upcoming school board meetings, I believe, Dr. Meyer?
Yeah, I think it's, it's, we were going to do it at the board retreat, and we're doing the board retreat.
May 18th.
May 18th.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, Penny was suggesting an extra, I said Penny, so you have to.
Thank you.
I was about to say, Ms. Franklin. Uh, your suggestion is additional day than what we already have, certain days on the calendar, or you are, uh, asking one of the days to be dedicated for that?
No, I'm not asking that any of these days be delegated. I'm asking that we choose a day very soon.
I see.
To continue this, because, you know, one of the conversations that we had during our development with V S B A is that, um, we can't just keep moving days around and filling our meetings with other stuff. And I have been bringing this up for several years, that our retreat does not have to be in May or June. When I first came on this board, it was in February. So when you started the year out, you started having conversations and, about things that you're going to be doing the rest of the year or to help you get through the rest of the year. So, uh, yeah, not in favor of plugging in to a regular scheduled. to a regular scheduled meeting to do work that is not supposed to be done during regular scheduled meetings. This is time that we take to develop ourselves around different issues that affect us as board members and how we operate within this district.
Ms. Diggs, I think we talked about maybe some additional training. And so we'll, we'll, first, we got to find somebody and with Ms. Diggs as to what will be appropriate and, and and then once we see what their availability is, try to match it to the availability of the board. If that is the will of the board.
Is, I, I guess I, I want to ask Penny on, on that, did, did you want something to be set up as like outside training, or were you thinking more of a retreat where we could have a conversation about that stuff, or maybe a little bit of both?
Well, the development, not training, remember I said, we train adults, we develop people. So, that needs to be just in itself. Because we are so far from where we need to be to understand the issues around that and how they affect people. Because I'm still, still got some issues with that last go around. Comments that were made, how they made me feel. So I'm talking about setting time aside to do that development.
Okay.
So I think we need more consensus on that.
Yeah, I, I, absolutely. I think that that's some, something that needs to be done. I don't know if I said it before, but, you know, the, the Dialogue on Race stuff that I've attended has just been really eye-opening for me and I think for a lot of other people. And I guess I was expecting something a little bit more like that when we did our development. But I also look forward to applying the things that we were learning and, and having conversations with, with some of our colleagues about how to move forward. So, yeah, I would support that.
And it would also be helpful for me if you guys could give me some detailed types of things that you would like to have presented, the kinds of information you would like to cover. So that is, I'm trying to find someone that can provide that development opportunity for you. I could be really specific about the kinds of information that needs to be addressed during the sessions. Session or sessions, whatever your pleasure is.
And I'll tell you who's doing some good stuff is Ms. Diggs and Stacy. They're doing great jobs, yeah.
Why can't y'all do it?
They're doing some really good stuff and they're developing some things and
And Ms. Diggs says.
I mean, they really are. I mean.
Just before you said that, I thought, well, maybe I'm out of tune by saying that. But why can't you do it?
They're starting to train folks and doing, they're already doing great stuff with our principals that I've really enjoyed and principals have seen a lot of value in it.
Awesome.
I think they are.
Even if, even if it's me, I, I do need some feedback about the, the types of, of information that you're seeking.
Yeah, maybe we all each, you know, get in touch with you, send, send what we think.
Yes.
Well, that would be. I'm going to say this. So if you don't know what you do or don't do or say, how can you give feedback on something you don't know a whole lot about? Suggestions around that.
So I guess, like, so more specifically, are you looking for really specific examples of things such as micro or macro aggressions? Are you looking for specific examples of, just from a historical perspective, how just things that have happened over the years have had an impact, a negative impact on the outcomes?
All of it.
Well, how about this?
All, all of the above.
Yeah, how about Judy, why don't you, because I, I think, you know, Penny's right, you don't know what you, you don't know what we have to offer. So maybe just send out a list of options to the board and, and pick some things and you guys can sort of, you know, say, you know, what, what do you think really would interest you in learning more about? And, and then we'll, we'll go from there.
And if I may, keep in mind that I'm not an educator. So when you're asking questions, keep it on a lo-, a level that I'm going to understand because I have no problem feeling out of service, but I've got to understand it. And I, I, I didn't, a lot of the terms, a lot of the terminology, that, it was not something that, I, I didn't know which direction, I, I didn't, and it wasn't that I wasn't willing. I was. I even looked it up on Google. I tried. But make it in a term that someone who's not an educator can understand. Thank you.
That's a good point.
I'm, I'm curious, I didn't, I haven't been to the Dialogue on Race. I haven't been involved in the conversations. I haven't had that privilege. What is it about that mark that you think made that that you say was, made it successful and made it feel right? I'm just wondering if that's something, there's some way that could be tied in or whoever develops that or whoever, whatever issues are discussed. I, I don't know enough about it to really.
Yeah, I, I think that it's, it's, it's an issue of perspective and, and, and Penny's right, right to some degree. There's things that I just, I don't know because I don't know. I, I haven't lived the experience of, you know, a black person growing up in, in the United States of America at this time, right? So, so there are things that you don't know. And so when you, I, I think in the Dialogue on Race, the, the one that I attended that was really impactful, I think we went through some exercises in small groups and, and played some simulation games and things like that, that, that were really quite eye-opening. And, you know, I mean, issues of, of privilege, for example, are things that have come up, not, I, I'm sure they have talked about this at Dialogue on Race, but I, I haven't attended one where they did. But I've had other professionals who have made me aware of that type of stuff. And that stuff happened, you know, within the last decade, well, a little more than a decade. But, you know, when I was a well-full-grown adult, you know, it was the first time I really heard about that kind of a thing. And, you know, I think you tend to have certain knee-jerk reactions. And so it's good, it's just good to have that different perspective. And it helps, in, in this role, it helps me to approach public policy with a whole lot more understanding of some of our marginalized constituents. And so, you know, and ultimately, that's where I would like to see all this stuff go. And I'm, I assume, and I hope.
If I can summarize for you, basically, it's, it's under, there's so much history that hasn't been taught. And, and the simulation was literally around that.
Yeah.
The history that's not been taught, and then the impact that it's had on us as a society.
I wonder, I, I know at Virginia Tech, Menah Clark has come in and put together a, you know, a really large diversity, inclusion, equity and inclusion group. And, and they do a lot of work and they do a lot of presentations. I mean, I wonder if we could tap into them at all to, to help us? Or maybe you do that already, I don't know.
So I think the point I'm making too, though, is you are, I, I'm getting the, the, I'm getting the feeling that we don't just want a presentation, we want the ability for you all to be able to.
Exercise.
Hands-on.
Explanations, helping folks understand.
The exercise that we.
Biases that they have, that they don't even understand that they have.
The exercise that we had in Dialogue on Race regarding the older policies and laws from centuries.
That's a great one.
Incredible.
Absolutely. I really enjoyed that. Yeah. The book Stamped is something that a lot of, that, that I've read. And I know Mr. Gray's got a, a book group on Stamped. Stamped is the, is history that you didn't know. And I was a history teacher and I didn't know half of it. And I, I think it would be good for the board to just pull some pieces out of there and how it related to education. And, because what's happened over history is affecting what's happening now in education. And so I think that would be a great activity for a school board to understand the history of blacks in our country as it relates to education. And of course, we've had plenty of folks read that book that could, you know, go through it. And so we've got some, I think we have some experts who, we've got a staff now that's working on equity.
So Ms. Diggs, does that help define things, or do you still want to make a list for us and?
I mean, I'm getting an idea. I think, I think so.
Okay.
Ms. Franklin, did you have something else you wanted to add?
I'm just saying, we can read and we can talk, but until we really understand what we react to, how we react to it because of the biases that we carry around, and we all have them, then it's not going to make a, not a whole lot of difference. Because, well, that doesn't apply to me. Because you don't understand, yeah, you're, you're, you're adding to that situation.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Diggs. All right, so that'll be brought back to the board and we can find some dates that, that will work. Any new business? Okay, any announcements, information? Okay, you see our upcoming school board meetings. So the January nineteenth meeting, we'll be talking about the, the budget and SOL update. And is that, is that here or at the, at the PD Center?
Dr. Meyer, we wanted that one to be here because it's the budget presentation. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, it'll be here.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure of that.
Yes, so we can easily televise it.
Yes.
And put it on. So, yeah.
Correct.
That's great.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. So now we need to move into closed session. Our next order of business is closed session. Do I have a motion to go into closed session to discuss two personnel matters as authorized by section two point two dash three seven one one of the Code of Virginia?
By Ms. Graham? I, it's for, we had a change today. I am so sorry. Four personnel matters for the board to consider.
So correction, to discuss four personnel matters as authorized by section two point two dash three seven one one of the Code of Virginia.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we are now in closed session.